We have a quorum now, don't we?
Pardon?
We have a quorum now, don't we?
We do, but if we haven't got the Zoom working yet, I take, let's give it a minute so they can get the Zoom video working. And then if Dave shows up before they do that one, just go ahead.
Want me to text him?
Does anybody?
I just, I put them earlier.
You want to?
I do it.
Okay.
Do I think one this weekend, John?
There he is.
Oh, there, we were just texting you. You're three minutes late, Mr. Knutson.
I thought I'd be censured.
Nice try. Words had a...
Three centuries.
Oh.
Where's your?
Oh, you're over here.
Oh, am I?
Come on down. All right.
I see they're unidentifiable.
All right, so I would call this meeting to order. Let's stand for the pledge, please. Pledge.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call please, Stan?
Herr Bachmann?
Here.
Trustee Knutson?
Here.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Stelter?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Trustee Markle?
Here.
Okay, the quorum can continue. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do you have a second?
A second?
Discussion? Yeah, Mr. Markle.
There were some items that were posted or indicated that they would have been included on the last agenda. Did you make it?
Like staff reports in Mexico?
No. The administrative report regarding termination application of residentries in C-1 zone, page 14 of the minutes previous and the minutes from the 28th indicated that the C-1 zoning would be an item on the next agenda and it was not.
So what was that item was the language in that. The definitions of single-family and multifamily going, that was what was coming back to the board. And because the agenda was so full, we decided to push it off.
Okay. In the future, if there's an item that is to be included on the agenda, would it be best to do that by motion?
Yes.
Okay. And is this the appropriate time to add items to this agenda for discussion?
Yeah, probably, yeah, they're not posted and so people don't know about it, so no.
I understand that there would be no action possible without having public notice. However, discussion, as my understanding, is allowed, just as if someone had walked in and brought a subject to the board.
Well, and that's during public comment period, so that's a different kind of animal than this.
I understand.
I don't know, I would have to consult with the attorney to make sure that it would work parliamentary totally. Because we have usually, our standard is it's not posted, we don't bring it up.
Okay. Well, nonetheless, I move that we add two items to the agenda. The 211 and 1/2 Niagara Alley tree work reimbursement and the water treatment plant habitat project.
Okay, both of those are slated to be on the next meeting.
I understand that.
All right, well, we have a motion, do we have a second?
What was the motion?
Motion was to add the 211 and 1/2 Niagara Alley tree work reimbursement.
Oh, you already had a motion and a second, don't you have to vote on that first on the agenda?
Well, we're modifying.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're modifying.
Yeah, okay, let me, sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Procedure, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so it's amended to the justice.
Procedure, yeah. I'm going to amend the agenda with the addition of 211 and 1/2 Niagara Alley tree work reimbursement and water treatment plant habitat project for discussion only.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussions?
So, Thomas, were you primarily interested in trying to, in conveying some of what we learned today out of the field trip or?
Um, yeah, I would like to review for those who weren't there some of the information that we received and that was provided to us by Mary today, as well as make sure for the record that it seems like the involved parties weren't the impression that all of us had been informed about the exact state of the project and that everybody was up to speed and they were waiting on us for action. I want to make sure that we have a discussion about the record of this project as well as what we've learned today. Do you agree?
Other comments from the board?
But it's question, clarification, it's on the next agenda, right?
It is on the next agenda. And it seems to me that the information that you're going to provide from the tour today would be very valuable for other people who would like to be in the room. So it would just bear repeating again. And so it seems to me that it's a fruitless discussion at this point in time. The second part on the 211 and 1/2 Niagara Alley, Ms. Ferguson was tasked to look into this and to come up with something at the next agenda. It is premature to be bringing this back to the board until Ms. Ferguson finishes her investigation.
I understand that. My reason for adding it to the agenda is that the attorney, our attorney Jeff Conklin, indicated that it would be appropriate for the board to direct staff to do this.
We did.
There was no motion to add it to the 12th, I checked out on the 12th, there was no motion as to...
But it says in Robert Rills' order, it specifically states that you don't have to have a motion to bring something to the board such as that, that if there's general agreement on the board, it can be considered binding even though you don't have a motion.
Nonetheless, the previous board found that direction to staff without a motion was occasionally neglected and decided that all staff direction would be made with motions only. Therefore, I would like to make sure that this is going to be on the agenda, if possible, on the 12th despite there not being a motion, that an investigation is underway. In addition, I think it is inappropriate to assign staff to investigate an incident where they may have been party to the creation of the incident. It's self-investigation, I think there's a conflict of interest. And that's all my thoughts on that.
Okay.
Adding that to the agenda.
Further discussion from the board? All right, yes, Mr. Chris.
Um, I think there's a couple of points that are helpful to me. One, because I'd already arranged for you such short notice about today, I was working on it because there was no way I could go with the sewer treatment plant thing. So it'd be really nice for me to hear it fresh what happened in there and what insights people might have. And we can put it on the agenda later, but I'd like to hear it fresh. The second thing, I think it is really wise for us to get in the habit, as you were suggesting, that when we assign something to staff, it isn't just one word we can say to the staff. I think we as a board need to agree that that's something staff should take on so that we don't overburden. So, you know, I can see the points.
Okay. Kind of echoing what Dave, what you've just said, because frankly, Thomas, your description of why you wanted to talk about it on this agenda, you've really kind of talked about, you know, just through the, which is the discussion you were hoping to have. It's just, so I would kind of say you have expressed your concern about the investigation into Niagara outside of the agenda. So maybe, I don't know, I mean, does this, does it, do you feel like this discussion that sort of happened ad hoc, is it what you were hoping to do?
I suppose the facts will be determined on the 12th.
Right. But do you feel like it needs to be put on the agenda as a discussion item? Still, would you like to continue it? I guess we're in this...
Well, it's going to be...
Let me clarify. I think it's really important, what Thomas is bringing up, that we actually formally make a motion to assign this to staff. So I think that's a good idea and that's why I'm probably going to vote for adding this to the agenda today.
However, I'm not sure we can make a motion today because we did not agendize this.
Right, exactly, so we can.
Already, already lost it.
Oh, I know.
The opportunity to do the work.
You, because we didn't make a motion Thursday night, is that what you mean?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can amend the agenda to put these two items on. And then because we have a quorum and this is a listed posted meeting, just like any other meeting, yes, we can make motions and make decisions. Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
Just want to add that I appreciate the desire of consensus when providing direction and did want the board to be aware that I did take the consensus at the April 28th meeting to gather information and bring information back to the board on the 12th, which I've already begun undertaking, I actually only have one person left to speak to. So I very well understood that it was the consensus of the board that this be finalized and brought back to the board at the May 12th meeting.
Okay.
I have a question. I have not done my procedural training, so I'm, what's the word, lost. I wanted, I was going to suggest in one way or another that we move the rules and procedures resolution to a time when Jeff could make it, having been the author, one of the authors of it. Would that be an amendment to the agenda?
It could be done one of two ways. It could be an amendment to the agenda. The other thing is when the item comes up, move to have it continued to the next meeting or continued till a time, Mr. Thompson, sorry.
I apologize for being...
Oh, no problem, no problem.
Lost.
It's all learning. Okay.
So, yeah, there's, the question of the people is...
Yes, exactly, that we have, we have two agenda, I think it's the 211 and 1/2 tree. The tree thing, the tree thing and the water, the sewer plant tour and Turner Wildlife Remediation Plan. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. So we're going to put those after mayor and staff reports. All right, announcements. Oh wait, no, we still need to approve the agenda as amended. Can I get a motion to do that?
We approve the agenda, it's modified. Make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I have a question first.
Oh, yes.
Is this the agenda? I'm very confused by what we're looking at here. This kind of powder blue designer look here, it's not what we're used to seeing.
Cover sheet.
It's a cover sheet.
That's the cover.
It's more than one page.
No, the next page is the resolution. We don't have an agenda here in the audience.
I didn't print correctly.
And it's also not on the computer from what I can see, when I downloaded the agenda.
I downloaded it and it was online.
Looking at it right.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have something we can write on?
I will, I'll go French.
It's pretty simple.
Yep.
You want to just take a look, because this is...
Well, I like a paper copy because I take reviews.
Yeah, just so you know what we're...
Yeah, and this is all we got with a lot of resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. We got a second done yet? Yes, all right, all in favor of approving the amended agenda?
Aye.
Fine, opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, anyone have any announcements?
No.
Okay, then let's move on to...
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
I do, the annual, I forget what the event is called, the Wacky Raft Raft Events.
Delta, you're a Delta, I can go.
Yeah, USCC, yeah. Those guys are looking for certified raft guides. So if anybody, any raft guides are interested participating, they can contact Kate Redmond of KBNF.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, let's move on with unfinished business. So we're, first on the agenda was an ad hoc committee recommendation to trust meeting policy and procedure. Do you want to make your motion, John?
Yeah, I move that we defer this discussion to a time when Jeff can be present, which as I understand would be the next Thursday, the next meeting.
Okay.
On Thursday. And I don't have to motivate it, just to make that proposal.
Yeah, just an example.
That's, so I think that's my proposal is to defer that discussion in action.
Okay. Do you have a... Okay, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion from the board?
Well, the main thing is including Jeff sees this as kind of his legacy. This is one of the things that he really wanted to work on when he was on the board, is to try to get the structure of meetings in a way that was more productive for the board. His main thrust in meeting with him is that this board is not inclusive. You cannot be a parent and a full-time worker and serve on the board because of time demands. And so a part of the reason he had the chances that he had was to try to open it up so we have better representation in the future and that it isn't such a time sink to serve on the top guys.
Just for clarification, talking about trustee Jeff Thompson and not attorney Jeff Conklin.
Right, Jeff Thompson. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chris. I don't have time.
Okay. And I, it was important to me, until very recently, I've been a mayor citizen and watching this from the outside in. And my greatest reservation about pitching in and becoming a trustee was the lack of civility, the overtime issues. And I've talked to three of the outgoing people and it was the first thing they said about reasons for leaving. And so this was, is, in my mind, a great step forward in taming meetings and getting done what we need to do, being more direct about it and, you know, getting to the point of the meetings. So it's very important to me that this be asked, discussed, given a really good fair hearing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
No, we not be voting for this, for the same reasons that I suppose John proposed it. I think that the more the time that we have to discuss it, the more developed it can be at the time that we provide it to our attorney. If there are things that we need to hash out, we can do it now without his cost and attention and the determination of it. And then once we think we have something that we might want to provide to him, hopefully at the next meeting, he can review it at that point. So we have the opportunity today to do some discussion and refinement on these ideas, which I agree are extremely important. And for, I also contacted outgoing trustees and previous applicants who did not reapply. And universally, 100% of everyone who responded said that meetings are the reason, like the primary reason that they don't want to participate. So if we can do, whatever we can do to address that, I think today, beginning today, that it is very important, so I'll be voting against this motion.
Anyone else?
I just want to make clear, you are referring to Jeff Thompson, who will be a citizen participant.
Yes, right. Right, exactly.
Who will only get to, who will only get to speak.
Yeah.
You know, once maybe.
Well, we tried to remind you.
Wait a minute, and you're referring to Jeff Conklin, who I don't know if Jeff Conklin has anything to do with this.
Am I, am I, did I mishear, are you waiting for Jeff Thompson?
Jeff Thompson.
Jeff Thompson, not Conklin.
Okay, I heard Jeff, yeah, sorry about that. That's why I made the distinction when Dave began speaking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because Jeff Conklin has no, has nothing to do with this.
By, by the same token.
So, all right, so I just want to, that's it, I just want to make sure everybody understands that Jeff's...
Thank you, yeah, thank you, yeah.
And you wanted to make sure that Jeff Thompson was in the audience and would have the ability to get up and speak.
Yes.
My sentiment stance, I think.
Okay.
What we can do today, you know, is important.
Anything to add? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the ad hoc committee recommendation. Oh, you, Ms. Watson?
I would like to suggest, we have a new board here right now, there's only one member from the last board. I don't know how much the new board is reviewed. I think you're still going to be appointing another board member, so you don't even have a complete board yet. And I personally think the new board might want to take a little bit of time with each other, seeing how you work together. I mean, you have a new board, these are recommendations made by an old board based on their experiences and they don't necessarily have to transfer to you. I think sometimes you guys getting your feet under you, see how you interact as a board and see how you interact with the room, the staff, the mayor, a little bit before you start making changes to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in public? No? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the ad hoc committee recommendations. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. All right, next is the budget to actual for first quarter 2022. So, Ms. Jones, do you have anything you would like to say prior to opening it up for board discussion?
No, you're ma, no, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so comments, questions? Yes, Ms. Jones?
I have a series of comments on several of the tables. And I am working off of the old packet, so I'm going to refer you to the page number that is embedded in the budget sheets, which is in the lower right corner. Because my page is... Yeah.
Okay, that works.
Cindy, you're 428.
Yes, that, no, I'm working off the 428 packet because I make notes in it. But I'll give you the page number for the budget. The budget pages themselves are numbered separately on the lower right-hand corner of each page, page 2 of 11. So, just so I don't have to try to go back and forth.
Yes, Ms. Jones?
It may be helpful to have Cindy actually walk us through an example page and show us how to read that.
Sure.
That'd be really important. So maybe take, maybe a simpler one. I think which one might be simpler.
We wouldn't have the capacity right now to put that up on the screen, would we? Okay.
Well, I don't know, can... Would you be willing to do that and just walk through, take administrations and go through the totals for income and the totals for expenditures and just explain what each column total is? So for instance, starting with, we're on page 1 of 11 and the first figure is 6,836.50.
So wait a minute, say it what again?
We're on page 11. Anyone in the mid? Page 1 of 11.
Which, which one, administrator? Is it administration? Okay, what was the first number you just said?
First number is in the total for income. So that is 6,836.
Okay, thank you. With me? Yeah, March, March actual income. Okay.
Do you want me to explain how this works or do you want me to explain something about that number?
Do you don't have to explain about the number, I think you need to explain how someone would read the sheet. For instance, like, you know, this is March issue, this is February, this is January, so you can compare what's happening in the month. Here is the year-to-date actual and then what this MO budget, remaining budget, 2022 ridged 20% means remaining budget means. So that we're all on the same page with those. If we could just do it for that line, I think that...
There we go.
Okay.
And so the page number she's referring to is...
1 of 11 of this.
Sorry, you're on the May 2 packet.
Yes.
Page 11.
Page 14.
No, no, no.
Page 11.
It's 1 of 11 on the budget so that we can keep page in the same place. And it's page 14 of the...
I thought it was page 13.
Page making a problem with pages.
Exposed everybody.
Yeah. Okay, I think we all have it. Okay.
So on the far left column, that is my account number. The next column is the description, like property tax, sales tax. That tells you where, where the revenue comes from. The next is March actuals, this is what we actually took in, in March. The next one is February actuals, that's what we actually took in for February. The next column is January actuals, that's what we took in for January. Current year-to-date actual, that's those added together to give you the quarter, in this case, it'll be the quarter actuals. Then, the next column is three months of monthly budget. So it takes the annual budget, divides it by three.
No, four.
Three.
So, the first three months would be one quarter of the annual budget.
Right, but it takes 12 months, divides it and gives you three months worth of budget.
By four.
Yeah, keep going.
Um, the next column is the remaining of that three, that quarter budget. The next column is the annual budget that was approved. Then it gives you a percentage of what the actual is of the annual budget. And since it's quarter, our percentage, where you're looking at about 25, you're going to try and hit 25% of the budget. These are just tools, it's not 100% accurate because there's things that we pay at the beginning of the year like SIRSa. So you're going to see 100% in there because we've already paid it at the beginning of the year.
And that, that 100% means that we paid, in this quarter, we paid 100% of the budget.
Of what was budget.
Right, okay.
And then the remaining budget, how much is left of that annual budget after taking out what we have received year-to-date?
I took a bookkeeping course half a century ago, no kidding. And what I remember of that is anything in parentheses is a debit or in red. I was taught double entry bookkeeping.
Yes.
And I see parentheses here with the remaining budget and that's the same as the beginning. We didn't subtract anything out of that. It's the same on the very top. It's $5,288, three-month budget.
That's because on that one, we haven't collected anything.
We haven't collected.
Well, we have, it's not recorded.
We get it after the quarter is done, right? Is that how that's done?
We get it monthly. These numbers, as you look at the top, says these numbers are subject to change.
Okay.
That is a number that requires manual entry and those manual entries are not completed.
Okay.
Did you have your hand up, Mr. Markle?
Yeah, just kind of a comment. I feel like if, this is, first, I want to say thank you, Cindy. This is very, not exactly what I had asked for and I'll elaborate why, but I very much appreciate you putting this together. I think that if the board's provided this information complete and quarterly, it puts us in a much better position to do our work. As it is, it's, because it's subject to change and it appears incomplete, it is not very useful as a tool to gauge where we are right now with our expenditures. Essentially, what we need is finalized actuals, which I think it is reasonable to expect those to be provided to the board quarterly, if not monthly. And I think in order to do that, the process would have to be automated. I wouldn't want to, I feel like if all of these numbers are being entered manually, this is a monumental effort to put together a document that could be produced automatically, given the right tools. So I feel, is this an item for discussion or are we allowed to make motions upon this topic?
Make a motion if you want to.
Okay. Very well, I move to direct staff to produce a complete, if not finalized, budget to actual summary quarterly.
Okay, second on that. I will second it. All right, discussion from the board. Yes, Mr. Markle?
As I began to say, essentially we can't know where we are financially now, nor can we plan for the future. nor can we plan for the future without completely categorized information about how much money has been taken from the community and where it has been spent versus our current budget. We're kind of flying blind here in a monetary sense because we don't know, we don't know the numbers.
Okay.
Yes, I might add, I do have comments on several of the tables here, and I have questions about some of the numbers. So I don't know if those questions by me would provide an extra impetus perhaps for coming up with the software to do this easier and, and talk about the theory behind our budget as well. That, because I have questions. I'll be honest, the numbers in, some of the numbers in this table do not match the budget we approved. And Cindy can probably explain why. But some of the totals don't match our approved budget. And I don't know why.
Okay.
And I think those are things I wanted to point out to try to understand why. And then there's another situation I think we need to talk about. Well, never mind, I'll stop right there.
Okay, yeah, because we're just looking at this. So Cindy, in order to get finalized numbers for a quarter, how much time do you need?
Point of order, Mayor.
To do that?
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Markle.
We had a trustee who was indicated that he wished to speak during this debate.
Yes.
Uh, is it his, not his right to speak first on the matter?
I had started my question prior to Mr. Valentine raising his hand. So then I will finish my question, and then Mr. Valentine will have his turn. Ms. Jones?
Could you please repeat the question?
Yes. How long would it take you for, to get finalized numbers for the first three months of the year? So can they be completed in April or would you need to have a month or two months lag to do that? How much time would you need to do that?
I cannot answer your question at this time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There's a lot of factors involved.
Okay. All right, Mr. Valentine?
This sort of leads to my comment. I would actually know a lot more about staff time, money, software, and also, like you said, the philosophy. What does that mean for how we do budgets? And I, at this point, don't know enough about it to say it one way or another.
And we are going to have a budget training from Dana Levesque at DOL.
Which one's that?
He's our regional.
No, I'm sorry, which meeting?
Oh, it's a, it's a lot, yeah, it's already scheduled.
Sorry.
I don't know if I brought it here, but, yes.
I'd like to say that you have 99% of the information. There's only 1% of the information that is missing.
Okay. Yeah, kind of.
Is that because you have not paid all the invoices that have come in?
No.
And?
Because I do not have, I have to make manual entries for credit cards and certain items that come in electronically.
So it's, it's a matter of the, the debits haven't been put in? You have bills to pay?
Debits and credits.
And credits.
Revenue, and there's a little bit of revenue and a little bit of, and credit cards. The, so the majority, anything that's been paid through March is in here. Any, anything that's come in other than electronic payments are in here. The only thing that's not in here is manual entries, and that is going to be, the, um, what comes from Delta County, which is property tax, et cetera. Um, and then the credit card, what's been spent on credit cards, which is very minor in the scope of everything.
But, and if I may, just so I understand, our, what is the name of our, how we budget? It's, we, you budget based on payment of something. You don't, you?
No, we are cash, we're cash and accrual basis.
Cash and accrual, thank you.
We are not, we are not straight cash and we are not straight accrual. We're modified accrual.
Which means you would not put in the budget here an item that, if a bill is coming, but you haven't received it yet and you have not paid it. You would not put that paid in an expense?
It does not go in here until it is paid.
Right, that's what I mean. So it has to be paid in order to make it into here.
Yeah.
And you, we may have spent the money, we may have accrued the bill in January, we may have done a service in January, but you didn't get the bill and you didn't pay it till April. What am I trying to say?
That is correct.
You bought something at dawn, let's say, and, but you don't actually get the pay. No, that's not a good example.
No, it's not like a credit card, a credit card.
Yeah.
You're talking about SSG, and yes.
Right.
You approved it in January.
Right.
We paid for part of it in this quarter. The other one did not get paid until April. It will not show up until we pay it.
Right, and that's what I mean. We know there's bills being created, bills being accrued, but till they're paid for, they don't show up in here.
That is correct.
And is that another reason the numbers are subject to change? Well, no, because if you, SSG, we, they did the service in January, but they don't get paid till April. It shows up in April.
Correct.
Okay.
So the?
That might be helpful for?
The other things that are going to cause the numbers to change is if I had to move numbers from this year into last year because they were last year's, actually, last year's expenses. We paid them in '22. They have to be moved back into '21. Those will, those are done in the audit and those will not. Until that's done, I don't record those in, I don't correct them in this year until everything, the audit is complete, then I correct this year. Um, there's also going to be some revenue that might have gotten booked in this quarter that is actually last year's, or 2021's numbers. So that gets moved, but I don't move it out of this year until I'm done with 2020, have completed the audit in 2021.
But mostly, all the expenses in here were based on getting, getting the money after January 1, 2022 primarily? I mean, if all the revenue is what we get after January 1, 2022?
The revenue, there could be some revenue in here that got moved to 2021 that hasn't been taken out of here yet.
Hmm, okay.
And then at the end of the year, you get, like, sales tax is a perfect example because of the way it comes in, but it is 2021's revenue. I have to move it into 2021 even though we receive it in 2022. Again, in 2023, we'll get it 2023. I have to move it back into 2022.
What this tells me is we really need a work session because this, anyway.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, let's go back to your motion.
Yeah, well, again, the thing is, I could see if Mr. Levesque could do this earlier. He, he wanted to do this closer to budget season so that we would have it for budget season, but I could see if he could come and do a work session with us earlier.
My, my concern is, centers around budget, the notion that there's a budget season. Um, to my mind, it should always be budget season. This is my intent with this, getting this information at a regular interval throughout the year would make it so that we're not caught at the end of the non-budget season by suddenly having to come up with a budget where we haven't even discussed it at all. We haven't seen numbers like this. We know nothing about it. And I've seen it happen year over year where trustees are presented with a giant stack of papers and say, here's, here's what you think next year's budget ought to look like. Uh, have added any modifications? And that discussion doesn't begin until that is produced and given to us. Whereas the way that the discussion should be proceeding, I think, is meeting by meeting if possible, month by month if necessary, and quarter by quarter at a bare minimum. Okay? So my motion is to direct staff to produce a complete, if not finalized, budget to actual summary quarterly. What I just heard from Ms. Jones is that this caveat that these numbers are subject to change is a phenomenon for the first quarter only, where some costs should be attributed to the previous year, right? And really, they're like December to January. Let's see, shake a head here from Dave. Um, this, this is what I understood. Um, therefore, subsequent quarters, two, three, and four, shouldn't have that caveat, which I think would make them much more useful.
Yes, Mr. Markle.
Well, having served on the Finance Committee for several years, there's a lot of moving parts. And so every quarter, there are things that are coming in, there are the previous quarter and the last quarter. So what you have is a point in time that you can look at and say, how far ahead or how far behind are we? And I think that's what's valuable, not seeing regular reports, because then you can realize like, oh, man, look at what's happening with the water, and we didn't count for this. Or look at these, this sewer thing that we had here, and we didn't really account for that. So that's the purpose of it. It's a snapshot in time as best as you can do. So to expect it to be perfect is really pretty unrealistic because every quarter, there are going to be things that go in between the two, so.
Granted, I, I expect that it will never be possible to do it perfectly.
But you get an idea.
Yeah, although I, I think, I'm not saying, and as I open with, this is not useless entirely, but unless we have some confidence that these numbers are not going to change a lot, or maybe an indicator as to what is more likely to change. You know, if something's like, not, it's definitely final, it's all squared out, but these categories might, you know, have to figure out where the, what, what lies there, I think would be necessary.
Mr. Markle?
Um, my concern is that we've, we've spent quite a little money on the little prop we had in the, in the alley here with the sewer. We've also spent a tremendous amount of money on engineers and consultants and everything else. I think we need to look really closely at what we've spent and what we've got left because we're probably going to have to amend the budget, and that's a process that's going to take some time. And we need to be on top of it, and that's where we started here. And I can see where we, why we have this, this way because there's net 30, net 60, and net 90. And it used to drive me crazy in my bookkeeping too, but you've got to, you've got to have an idea of where we're at. And the snapshot's what we got. So let's work with that and discuss what we have to discuss and work with our, the tool we have. And it's never going to be perfect, but it's the best we can do. And as long as there's credit in this world, we're going to be stuck with that. What really drove me crazy was net 120. And I had a lot of those people working construction. And that really sucks because, especially when it rolls over in the next year, and then you've got to go back, and then there's tax liability. It really becomes a nightmare. And truthfully, this is the hardest thing I've ever done in my life, any, any of this. It's, it's definitely mind-blowing. So I'd like to just kind of discuss what we have and work through that if we can.
But we need to take care of our motion.
Okay.
And the other thing is, you know, if you look at this document, if you look at these documents throughout the year, and we have, we've gotten quarterly budget reports as long as I've been on the board, we're talking four years. And that's minimal quarterly. We usually get monthly, except when we're going through the audit. And then there's always a lag because of dealing with the auditors and everything that has to go into the audit. But if you look at this, when that budget document hits our desks, this has prepared us for every single one of those items because we have watched that.
Mayor, point of order?
Yes, Mr. Markle?
Your opinion is irrelevant in this discussion.
Mr. Markle, that is not well-taken. Your motion is not well-taken. I quote from page 158 of Robert Twilson Board. "Informal procedure in small board. If the chairman is a member of the board, which I am, he or she can, without giving up the chair, participate and debate, make motions, and vote on all questions." So it is not well-taken.
I appeal to the board, um, the mayor does not make motions nor vote in our board. Therefore, I believe it's appropriate for the mayor to withhold their opinion unless there's a tie vote, whether or not we count.
Mr. Stewart, can you say?
This is a really interesting request that the mayor keep out of it because ever since I've been on the board, we had a mayor who would pontificate about what was their opinion. And actually, as an individual board member, you are free to make your own decision about what's going on. But to me, it's helpful because the mayor, and this is the previous mayor that I served under and our current mayor typically have a lot of information that I don't because their interaction with staff. And so I value hearing from the mayor, so.
Very well.
I don't think I would agree that trying to center the mayor, keep the mayor's opinion out of it is not a good idea.
Not censor, no, it's not centered, not censor. Um, this is a matter of neutrality for the chair. It seems like the, the indication of, and this is based on my review of lots of towns, the indication that our leaders give to us. If we are to be perceived as good members of society, we follow what our leaders say. And it's something that's just ingrained in part of human nature, I think. But that is precisely the reason that it is so important for a chair of a meeting chair to be neutral on matters of discussion because their opinion holds so much more sway. So I find it an abuse of the station of the chair to indicate that we should vote a certain way or to ask leading questions. And it's very clear in large groups, and I think that a municipal body is subject to the same rigorous rules as a larger group, that the chair remain neutral on all matters of discussion. And then, once a matter's decided, to speak only in support of it, just as all of us are expected to, not speak against a decision of the group. So what we're, what we're discussing right now is my point of order, which I appeal, which I have appealed.
Exactly, and I'm just going to call for a public.
Which I appeal to the, the board.
Correct. And so all in favor of?
We have questions.
Uh, excuse me, this, this does not involve the public. All, all of us in favor of, no, this does not. A point of order does not involve the public.
No, no, I would like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I would like to say something. And what I want to say is, it's very clear in the resolution and actually in ordinance that the mayor only votes when there's a tie and no motions. The mayor does not do a motion. I, I personally am not ready to make a motion to that extent right at this moment, or vote on a motion to tell you you can't speak at all. I would rather we talk about that in another setting, another public setting, but not do that at this very moment.
If I may suggest, there's not been a motion made.
No, it's a point of order. It needs to be settled by a vote on the board.
It's a point of order.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we could reapproach this issue at the next meeting when we're discussing how meetings are brought.
That would seem more appropriate. Okay, so we still have a point of order to deal with.
So how do you, what do you do?
Do you either vote to uphold the point of order or you vote not?
Okay, so in this case, you were asking for?
That I know of.
I was, I was asking for the chair to, to reserve their opinion.
To reserve opinion, okay. So at this point, if we vote that down, we can bring it up when it's more applicable as part of the meetings.
Correct, correct.
In the context of a meeting.
So all in favor of Mr. Thomas's point of order?
Aye.
Opposed or nay? Okay, now I will continue. My point is that when the budget document comes to us, what we have here has prepared us because if we are looking at these numbers monthly and we're quarterly, when that document shows up, it's not a surprise because we have had the groundwork laid for us throughout the year. So it, it should not? So it, it should not be a surprise at all. Yes, Mr. Markle?
Should not be, um, I don't recall, I don't, I don't share your recollection, that this, this table has been provided to any board's quarter.
I've been on this board for four years, Thomas. It has been provided. This has been the exception year.
It is possible that it was provided to you as a board member, but not to the public.
It's been in the packets monthly. Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
Referring to twenty twenty-one, we have December and January of twenty-one, um, March nineteen, the March, second meeting in March twenty twenty-one, second meeting in May twenty twenty-one, first meeting in June, second meeting in July, and the second meeting in October. In the packet.
Yep.
This document was in it?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. All right. Do you want to carry on with your?
I'm going to steal it.
Yeah, Paige.
I know, we never.
No, no, we're sorry. We don't have a motion, you know, we're just discussing this document. So why don't you go ahead and run through your questions with the comments?
Okay, and that way, the motion is still on the table.
No, there is no motion.
Did you withdraw?
Oh, yeah, we have the finalized quarterly budget. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and vote on that one? And then Paige can go through her separate things. All right, so we have a motion on the table to have a finalized quarterly budget.
Summary.
Pardon?
A summary.
Yeah, a summary, every quarter. Yeah, a summary budget every quarter. All in favor?
Um, I have a question first.
Mr. Markle?
Yeah, actually, uh, if I understand it, um, it shouldn't be any problem to approve this motion as it's already being done.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, Ms. Watson?
So, um, I don't know if this speaks to, um, the topic or, um, the motion, but, so I guess the, the disconnect that I'm seeing is if we've committed funds, because we've had exceptional spending, like this year, at the beginning of the year, and we've committed funds, but we haven't actually had to pay anything yet, that doesn't appear in the budget, correct? Because it hasn't been paid. The money hasn't come out. Um, okay, so I mean, if you make commitments, but nothing has left our accounts, but it's like you have a huge credit card bill outstanding, um, how do you consider the bills that aren't showing as being paid yet, that haven't been deducted in the, from the accounts, when you make your next spending, big spending?
All right. And so I don't know what I'm asking. So what I'm trying to do is to give this motion, take it. This is not, this is not relevant. Why is it not relevant? Because we're just talking about producing a, a summary quarterly budget.
Okay, so I guess what I'm asking for, this summary quarterly budget, I guess I'd like a little bit better explanation. Um, when you're talking about having a more living document, a little live document instead of all the manual entries, can it perhaps address some of the issue of having these committed funds that haven't actually been deducted, but are very, very important to consider before you make your next big spending purchase? You know, so you have that information in front of board members. How, how would that speak to what, um, your motion is?
All right, well, let's, okay, anything else from the public? Yes, Mr. Brunner?
But I hope that can be addressed.
Thank you.
Without your impatience.
Can you add a call that includes stuff you know you're going to have to pay? Because you've already had the work done?
No. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of, uh, quarterly budget? You can give it to the board? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. All right, Paige, it is two weeks.
So, so, so let me get to where I am on page two of eleven. And maybe I can have.
It's on fifteen in the packet.
Thank you. So the, I'm looking at the building table. And salaries and wages were twenty-six, twenty-seven in the twelve. Hang on, this is one where, um, wait one second. Yes.
Salary. I'm on the salaries and wages.
Yep, salary and wages.
One sixty-six, thirty.
Were, were budgeted for two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This is showing that it's a budget for two thousand, um, two hundred and fifty dollars. So my point is, the budget, what we approved, is not showing up in this table for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Because I have this budget table you gave me on the fourteenth that we voted on, and salaries and wages for general fund building were two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's what's on there.
No, I mean, were two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars in our budget, and now it's two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So there's several of these throughout where what I have checked on ClearGov and, and this budget, and the numbers are not the same, including totals. And so I'm quite confused. Sorry about this distraction. And there was a reduction of fifty-nine, five thirty-nine thirteen in this table versus what was budgeted. So I'll bring up a couple more, but, and then I have a question in the water sewer fund is where I'm really quite concerned about where we are and what we're spending. But to me, every number in here, original budget, shouldn't it match what's in the budget that we approved on the fourteenth?
I'm sorry, I'll have to research that.
Okay, I could send you an email with every table that I see that didn't quite work, if that would help. And all this came about, and let me just scroll through the tables a second. Great, hang on. Hold on one second, sorry. Um, a lot of the numbers are not the same. And I will send you the table in the cell where it's not the same, and I don't know why. But let me just, I will jump, because that's, um, I'm seeing that with one, two, let's see, three, four tables. And if you go to streets.
Which page?
Uh, this is.
Um, in the packet, it's screech, eighteen in the budget, it's five one eleven.
So with streets, the original budget included thirty-six thousand, five hundred grant rev- revenue. And, um, it's not showing up now at that, at that level. Um, right now, this is showing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the budget for streets. Our budget was two hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four. So I know there's numbers in this table, because if you go on that, if you look in the gray line on this particular table, you have thirty-six thousand, five hundred under the twenty twenty-two original budget, down in the gray, um, line at the bottom. But I don't know why it's there. It was actually included as grant revenue and reserve, reserve grant match in the original budget. So I don't understand what the line is, what the gray, you know, the gray line, what those numbers are. But, but our totals are not matching. In your mind, you probably understand why, but alls I can do is compare numbers. So that's, those are just some things I noticed. Um, and I think our income always has to, expenses have to always equal income. And it's not clear in this, in these tables that that is consistently the case. And let me get to the sewer fund and the water fund. On the pass-through grant fund table wasn't included in this set of tables. I didn't see it. So I'm sorry, let me scroll down to water. All right, so.
Eight of eleven, twenty-one in the packet.
Twenty-one in your packet. So I had sent an email, because I, we got a, we did get a table in March that was kind of current up through March twenty-fourth, and that was in the March, um, agenda packet. So I looked at this, and what I started looking at was I was concerned about the fact that when this budget was created, we did not know what we were going to have to spend on sewer and water. So I was looking at the numbers and how much had been spent. So in doing so, I asked a question, for instance, if you look on, go to the water budget and, um, contract services, which is line sixty dash fifty dash forty-two. There. So in the original budget, sorry, um, there was no money allotted for contract services. So now you're seeing money in the budget for contract services of twenty-four thousand dollars. So my point is, we are spending money on contract services, but you can't put that money in the budget, because we, we didn't allot money, we allotted zero for contract services. Which brings up the issue, which is why I want a special meeting. You are pulling, you are having to pull money from other fund, fund categories to pay for this. So I don't know where you're getting that money, and we need to know what fund categories are being, um, spent down for things that we didn't budget for.
So for my clarification, what I'm hearing is that these, because I didn't do Paige's research, trust her, um, that she's accurate, um, but this number for contract services, twenty-four thousand dollars, was added to the budget and then the budget was rebalanced, maybe? Could, or could it not?
It has, I don't think so. It, it's just, it's making our expenses more than they were. And that, you know, if you get a bill for contract services, even if it's not budgeted for, you have to stick it into the.
No.
No, you, you have to stick it into the quarterly report.
That's not what you're saying.
No, no, my point is, this is being looked at as if we are, we are, we are adding a budget line item that was zero before.
Right.
We, you cannot do that with budgeting. You have to tell me, as a trustee, that we need to spend money and we need to find which line item that needs to come from. It can't come from a line item that has zero money.
And I disagree with you on that. If you get a bill for something, that line item exists. Yes, it does. It's there, it's twenty.
Mary, I don't want to argue.
Yeah, in public, in public spending, what I was taught, that we have to, when we have a budget change like this, insignificant changes are not that deal. But when we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars, we need to vote on where we're taking the money from. And it has to come through the board.
But it still has to be in there listed.
It still has to be a.
Okay, yes, Ms. Ferguson?
So, um, what you're looking at on that page, of course, is the budget to actual. So if you look in the twenty twenty-two original budget line there, you'll see there's no number. And that's because no number was budgeted. But in actuality, in January, the Board of Trustees voted, uh, or sorry, February, the Board of Trustees voted to expend the money for SSG. And at the time of that vote and expenditure, it became part of our actual twenty twenty-two expenditures. At the time, it was an emergency and there was no vote on the board exactly where that would come out of. It was an emergency expenditure. And so that's why there has not been a board action to discuss what projects would be modified to absorb those unbudgeted for expenditures.
So I, I still find that a little specious, that, um, you can't be putting numbers in that we didn't approve.
It's not in the twenty twenty-two original budget. It's part of the actual expenditures for twenty twenty-two. So as she's providing you the, the budget to actual month over month, if she only provided you a budget to actual that held the numbers that were budgeted, you would never have an accurate document.
Here's the problem I see with this, is that I have nowhere, I, I have not gone line by line where this is changing. But in my mind, if a, but if we budgeted zero for contract services, you need to explain that explicitly to us, simply because we approved SSG's contract. Nowhere did I hear, okay, just so you know, we did not budget a single dime for contracting in the water budget. So we are going to have to talk very shortly as to where that money's really coming from, which is why I've been asking desperately for the very table that I believe Rick just talked about, which is whether we've paid for it or not, actually written the check, we need to see all the money that has been spent since January fifteenth, what budget item it would come from, whether there's budget money or not. So we know, because frankly, I think the only place we're going to be able to do a lot of switching is from salaries. We can approve money out of salaries to go to contracting within a fund, according to CML, as I understand it. We've not been told any of this, and this is why I'm so concerned we have not had a special meeting, because just going to the sewer plant, I mean, we have not budgeted anything close to what we're going to have to spend this year. And, and we're not, we're not coming up with new revenue. So we have to determine, given the revenue, what is not going to get paid for? What are we gonna, that, that's going to make the difference? So please, I, as part of this, I will stop now, but I would like to make a motion for a special meeting where we are given by contractor and budget item, budget number, how much we, um, have spent since January fifteenth on, well, we said fifteenth, because it was winter, it's left, but I'll go with January one, because we, every time we get a packet, there are more things that have to be purchased. This table has incredible things, and, and I have no idea how we're paying for it. Thank you.
Um, what's, what's the, the motion to try and fight out? Sorry.
Motion is, I would like to make a motion for a special meeting devoted to current spending and budget.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, I have a question. Let me write this down first. Would you like me to try and get this through back for, for this as well?
Um, I, there's a part of me that says no, because I just feel like we need to see what our universe is. And I don't know that he needs to be there telling us the nuts and bolts. I've been wanting to see how much we're spending. So I, I, I feel like not. I don't know that we, we need his high-level input while we're looking at numbers. We know what we budgeted, um, and, that's it.
That's fine.
That's, that's my thought. I would definitely, I want to hear from him, of course. I mean, I'll learn so much, but this is, this is, uh, current, my current concern.
Okay. All right.
Actually, I have a written out motion. I forgot I had written out.
Oh, so what is your written out motion?
I moved to schedule a special meeting on Thursday, May nineteenth, to be provided all expenses accrued since January fifteenth related to water and sewer plant repairs, upgrades, equipment and contract, engineering services, along with updated budget documents, identifying the budget category used to pay all expenses.
Second.
Okay, so we're replacing.
You're modifying your original order.
Right. So now we, no, it's just a new motion.
It's a new motion.
Because we're not going to modify the old motion to make a new motion.
Right, I withdraw that motion and put this one out there.
Okay.
And you seconded, Thomas?
I did.
And mostly, I wrote May nineteenth.
Well, we can check that date right now.
Okay.
It's in council meetings.
It is, yeah, I can, I can make that one.
Is that the Thursday?
Yeah.
I can't.
You can.
I'll be out of town.
And.
Just one second.
Okay.
Let me pull mine up, if I can.
I've got some hands down here, man. Oh, Ms. Ferguson?
I respectfully completely understand what you're asking for and, and respect the significance and the usefulness of it, but I do want to remind the board that you're asking for something that's, that is a way that our finance department has never tracked and created a report for. So, um, you're asking now for five months, along with the incoming that's happening right now, the work that's being done right now, um, of them to collect five months and be inputting that into a doc, a very specific document. Well, you said you didn't, do you only want the first quarter?
I said January fifteenth.
Oh, that's just two weeks.
Okay.
Oh, of the quarter? Yeah, I think the first quarter.
You only want January, February, and March?
I, I said the fifteenth, January, February, March, and since by then, I'll live with January, February, March, but that should be another motion.
Okay, but I've just, I've just stayed, I just wanted to be clear that, um, scheduling a meeting in two weeks on top of the other things, and creating a brand-new document and gathering that and inputting it in the way that it's being requested, um, that, that may not be, um, it, it may take her a little bit longer than that to do that. And I just want the board to be aware of that. I understand the significance, but we are asking for something that is never, we've never done before.
And the other thing is, we also have a dollar training that week on Tuesday.
Want me to amend my motion?
Yeah, do you want to try a different date?
May I please, 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 please remind you that we are in the middle of an audit?
And that's what I'm saying, all that stuff.
And that takes all my time right now. I have to do payables, I have to do payroll, and I have to keep up with the auditor. Auditors are my number-one priority right now, is getting them everything they're asking for so they can get our audit done. If you're going to pile on this extra stuff right now, I can tell you, I'm not going to be able to get it done. I'm working eight to eight now. I don't have any extra hours.
Well, I might say I asked for this back in early March.
I understand.
So...
And I've been working on this audit since the beginning of February.
Can I ask a quick, when are you expected to have a draft audit for us to review? I'd like to know a date that we're working to.
I don't have an answer to that right now.
Yeah, the final is like in June. Just a minute. In June, I think generally when we get the audit.
Final or draft?
Yeah, it's a final. And then we vote on it or we make changes to it, but...
That's in July.
We had, the previous board had asked for it to see a draft and did not want to just have the final put in front of us. So my question is, when would we see a draft?
I'd like to ask Lisa, who's writing the audit.
And a lot of, may I, a lot of that as well is contingent upon Cindy's timeliness in response to the questions and additional data that they've asked for.
Yes, Mr. Mark.
Okay, we're done talking about when the audit may be finished, I'd like to speak to the motion. This might be more appropriate to create an ad hoc committee for. And that would be, to my thinking, two trustees, maybe an interested member of the public. And we would give them access to the fundamentals that would build what Ms. Trustee Smith is asking for, perhaps. And then we could be scheduled at their leisure.
Yeah, let's see how that would work with the documents and the systems that we've got going now.
Oh, that's...
Is that possible to have people who are not familiar with working with this to pull that data out of this?
I'll remind you that we have a trustee access policy.
Right, right. But I mean, there's one thing to give you the whole document and it's another thing to make a realistic assumption that you will be able to pull out of that what you need.
I think Paige is pretty smart. I think she'd be able to do it.
Is it in a format that is easily downloadable and...
I think that's a...
It's in multiple. You have paper invoices, you have spreadsheets, you have... It would not be, here's a box and a computer, go to town. It wouldn't, that wouldn't work.
One thing it would work is in the disbursements, if you put the code. Do you have the code of the budget line those things are being paid with?
It has the account, it doesn't show the budget line in the full budget document.
Because that would...
It has the line, I can put the line item, account number.
Like 605022?
But I can't, I can't go back. Okay, you're asking for a whole lot of work right now in the middle of this audit.
Yeah, so I think why, an alternative to having a deadline with a certain formatted document to be provided, if we simply give concerned parties access to the availability of access to the documents.
And it's going to, yeah, the one thing too, when you have a spreadsheet that has multiple pages flowing into a major spreadsheet, it's a very complex document. It's not a straightforward thing. It's like when Ty was showing us his thing and he said like a thousand sheets that fed into that final sheet of his.
I understand.
And it's the same kind of thing with this. We have multiple sheets that are feeding into a final view. If you just look at the final view, it's not necessarily going to give you what you need. And if you, if it can be shared as a read-only document, because if you change any of those cells, then you screw up the whole document.
Don't give them the answer.
If I may respond to those comments. I have been doing software development since 2003. I have had classes in Excel. I understand entirely the complexity of software and complex tables, multiple sheets. I have designed databases which are far more complex than any of this. So take my word for it when I say that you're preaching to the choir. I know how complex it is.
Okay.
I think that giving this document to the public would be your best possible move. Because it's in the interest of everyone to be able to analyze and review these numbers for accuracy. And having them presented in this format where it's essentially a printout prohibits that analysis. In order to do that, you would have to retype this entire sheet. Okay? So in the interest of transparency and good government, a read-only version may or may not really work. Really what we want is a copy of the file. Right? And if that is provided, then it makes things like the analysis that Ms. Trustee Smith is talking about completely offline. So we don't have to worry about finding a schedule for them. It just makes all of our financials publicly available.
Yes.
I know this is kind of being treated more like a work session right now. It's just free flowing thought and conversation, and I hope that's acceptable. But for clarification, are you wanting a copy of the file that creates the budget to actual? Or are you wanting to actually have the information about things that we know have been expended but haven't been paid yet, things that are ordered? Because those are not the same thing.
Probably both.
Yeah, I would say both.
So again, those are not inputted in, there isn't a file to give to you.
This is an Excel file.
Yes, but again, the expenditures that have not occurred are not in that. That's what I'm trying to say, is that, so I think that it may be, I'm sorry. I'm, I'll let the board decide.
Well, and you brought up a really good point, if I might.
Yes.
That have we, whether there are items that SSG did the work and they've been paid for half of it, according to this. We know they have to pay another half. And work that is going on, that you are getting an invoice for, I would like to see. Because it could take five months to pay it, for whatever reason, I don't know. You know, a problem with the invoice. The bottom line here is, we, in all these, in the public works reports, the administrators' reports, we are hearing more and more about at least five contractors that are doing work. Work that needs to be done, I'm not questioning that. But we have no clue how much money we're spending and which budget is coming out of. And we have got to know that before we can seriously go through this table, which is excellent, and say, and get the guys at the sewer plant a trash collector so they're not pulling, oh goo, we looked in their dumpster today. It's horrible. They should not be doing that.
I'm not allowed to talk about it.
We need to be...
I'm just a snapper, I'm sorry.
And so, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure these things are getting done and paid for. I feel completely in the dark about how much is being spent and how are we doing fiduciarily. So I am, you know, I said I didn't want to do this, but I would. I could go through the stacks of invoices and, or look at the disbursements for that stack and pick out what I know is things that we did not count on doing in when this budget was passed. I could do that. I don't really want to, and we need to set up a system so that can be done. I mean, it always takes an emergency to show where we are, our shortcomings. And we are in it thick, and we got to figure out what we're doing with it. So I am willing to do whatever it'll take. I mean, if you can give me a read-only spreadsheet, I know how to do spreadsheets too. I'm not an alma like he does. I could ask his help. But I could look in there too, if I can see that it's a Pipestone invoice. Would I be able to intuitively know that in the document?
They're not listed that way.
Yeah?
No, they're not listed by vendor.
Contractor.
Yeah, by contractor.
So it'd be listed by...
Service.
Oh, well, that might help too. Okay.
Yes, Ms. Jones?
So you could come in and watch what I do. However, that's going to take away the time that I have to prepare this audit. So if you want to come in and I'll train you how I do what I do, we can do that. It will take many hours.
No, I don't want to do that.
But you're welcome to come in, because I'm going to have to train you how to take the information to get to this point.
You know, we could...
It's not...
I have an alternative. If I had the disbursement list in front of me and what you use to create the disbursement list, I bet I could make heads with tails of it, if that's possible.
That's our software called Gessell, produces the cash requirements report. Then I take that, put it into PDF, and then I go in and add the descriptions next to it. We, our software does not add those descriptions, so...
So I couldn't do cross-talk, I couldn't do a cross-talk?
They don't cross-talk, no.
Okay, all right, but... We can't, I don't...
We would love to do, I just wanted to say, we would love to give you what you're asking for and it may be that in this moment, it's just, we're just not clearly talking the same language on what it is. I understand what you're saying, that you would like to see what we've expended and in what fund that was not budgeted for.
No, not even not budgeted for. I just want to know what was spending. In total, then we compare to what we budgeted for.
Can we find some common ground and potentially start with working to get that for you for the water fund and the sewer fund? And not the entire budget, the entire top to bottom, but just start with those funds since those are the two that we know have...
That's what I'm worried about. And I'm willing to come in and look again through those invoices and start creating my own table, and then I can ask questions. I think that would be easier than trying to get your software. Because now that I see your stack of invoices, as I came, let me just do that. And then I'll have questions. So I am going to volunteer. Okay, the motion. Are we having a special meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're back to the motion on...
The motion on a special meeting. I'm going to withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Because there's nothing to meet about if I haven't done the work.
Okay. And Paige, I would be happy to give you a hand.
Okay.
And then maybe we can, yeah, pull up all the lists and disbursements and bring that in with us, because we have all those disbursements from previous meetings. And we can just see what we can sort out.
And we can look at the invoices and the stack, actually read the invoices. Okay, all right. Thank you for all of your perseverance through this. This is really important. So now we don't need a motion.
No, we don't need a motion because we figured it out. So...
Paige, if I may move, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay, second?
Second!
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? We're just taking a five-minute recess.
Okay.
All right. 802. Second session. So I'm assuming we are now finished with the budget to actual unless we have more comments? No?
I have no more comments.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the mayor's and staff report.
Oh, my copy that sheet that you are referring, that you've been referring to?
What do you mean? Hang on.
The sheet you showed me.
That you said that I pulled the wrong numbers. Can I make a copy of that?
That is what you, that was the budget you gave me that day Jeff and I came in for the...
I'm just going to make a copy, so I'm using the same thing you have.
All right, so let's move on to the mayor's and staff reports. My mayor's report was really very sad and... It was sparse, I'll put it that way. It was very sparse. If anyone has any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer it. Yes, Ms. Mark.
What are the status of the QuickWin grants and the AARP grants?
Okay, we don't know on the AARP. They haven't put back yet. QuickWin, we got notice from Stephanie. We did get the first phase one of that. So we did get funded for six trees and amenities, and we got turned down for the other 16 trees. But that gives us, they bring this up every year, there's a $5,000 limit. Every five years, a town can only get $5,000. So we'll just apply next year. And then C. Doc Grant has not come back in either, so we don't know what's going on with that.
And the tree grant, was that new trees in the park?
No, it's new trees. The five trees that we got are going to be on Grand Avenue and over at K.
Okay.
And the other trees were going to be on the park.
Yeah, so you missed that part.
Yeah.
That's quite a while ago, I guess.
Yeah, but like I say, it'll be back next year. We'll just apply next year. Yeah, so Paige?
Does anybody else finish with their questions? I had a question on, let's see, your mayor's report. You were talking about the El Pomar Foundation and they wanted to know what other sources to include. First of all, I'm curious, what kind of level of grant money were you going to look for?
You know, I was just, all I was looking for was, were they, did they even have an interest in funding something like that? And they said yes, and they do fund community or governments. So that was plus two. And yeah, they thought that was a great need and the fact we were a coal-impacted community would be another point in our favor. But they didn't want to be the sole force, sole supplier for it. So I was going to approach the Gates Foundation and, oh God, I have the list at home. There's like three or four other foundations that can support governments. And so I was going to go to them and see if they were interested in this and then go out and get how much it would cost to do a prefab unisex toilet building modular.
Oh, to replace the one at the...
No.
Addition.
Add, by the way. And so as soon as...
Oh, good.
So A, see which foundations would be willing to participate in this. B, then get how much it would cost, and then C would be to write the grants.
Oh, we did not get to talk about your mayor's report in the April 14th meeting. So I just had a back question, if that's all right. You had mentioned the possibility of sharing a grant writer with a couple other communities.
Yeah, I had talked, Regent Ken was going to do that. They were writing a grant to do that and actually have a grant writer that would be available to small communities, and that didn't go through.
But didn't go through, okay. All right. And then one last thing, you had talked about congressional grant funds through...
It was appropriations. It was congressional appropriations. And we were approached by Bennett's office and Hickenmaker's office. And so we put a proposal in for 600, what was it, $969,000?
For?
For the spring boxes.
Oh.
To rebuild three of the five spring boxes. And so we will find out about that probably March of next year.
And that was part of, what's the latest Build Back Better? No, that's when that went into...
No, this is completely outside of it.
Oh, okay.
This used to be what were called earmarks, congressional earmarks. And then they destroyed, they took away that program and they rebuilt it. And this appropriations fund is what used to be the earmark. So 1% of the nation's budget gets divided up between all the senators and congressmen for them to pick the pet projects.
That sounds crooked.
Well, they have, it used to have no guidelines on it whatsoever. And they put a whole lot of guidelines around it so that, you know, you can't take your senator and have him supporting your business on it and stuff like that. So we'll see. Again, we won't even hear about that until March.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Move on to staff report.
Do you get to take questions from the public?
On my mayor's report? Yeah?
I got a question. What is...
What is the, where did that bathroom by the playground in the town park come from?
We, I mean, that's the.
Yeah, um, we had a, the Peonya motion study that was done. That was one of their first suggestions that was part of the public input process. I know it's a very cumbersome document. It's a hundred and fourteen pages.
I know, I saw that several times.
But that's one of the things they.
Was there gonna vote on that? Has that been decided by the?
No, I was just seeing if we could even find funding for it.
Okay. What is the?
It's a high priority.
Yeah.
It's a high priority with the bathrooms that are already there in town park?
Well, it's because the kids often don't make it between the playground and the other bathrooms. And those other bathrooms are closed through the winter. So this would be a winterized, year-round bathroom, which we do not have in either.
Why don't you just winterize the park, the?
Well, we could, but again, it's far away from the playground, and having a bathroom near the playground would be really helpful.
Wow, and it's unisex?
It'd be unisex, yeah.
So, boys and girls together?
One at a time.
One at a, oh, it's just one stall?
Well, it'd be two, it would be one stall and two doors. So it's like the Forest Service bathrooms where they have the unisex bathrooms up at the trailhead. You have a door, you go in, you lock it, you do your business, you come out and the next person goes in, and it doesn't matter if you're male or female. Yes, Ms. Watson?
So can you extend water lines during a moratorium?
Oh, well, this is not gonna happen, no.
Okay, so I, I'm wondering, why don't you just move the playground closer to the existing bathroom, for example?
Well, we have other plans for that thing. I mean, the skate park is gonna go over there and, oh, some other stuff.
I know, but I mean, I, I think there might be some maybe ways to look at, ways to make it a little less expensive. Putting in plumbing like that and a year-round playground is very expensive. I mean, a year-round bathroom. We can hardly maintain the bathroom that we have right now during the summertime without the vandalism and stuff. So, it's just added costs. And I would hope that board would really talk about this and discuss this.
Well, I wouldn't, I'm writing it until, A, I'd have to get the numbers and staff time and everything else and bring it back to the board. So the board would have to vote on it.
Yeah, and also you have to adopt the Peonya motion study. Just because you have it doesn't mean it's.
Well, and it doesn't, just because it's the Peonya motion study doesn't mean we can go outside that study and do something that they didn't recommend.
Yeah, well, hopefully it would be practical.
I have another question on another item on the.
She's been waiting.
Michelle is.
Oh, Michelle's had her hand up for a while.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, Michelle.
Thank you. So I had a similar question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I have a similar question about the restrooms in the park. And my understanding is that the Peonya in motion study is not final and, well, maybe close to final, but has not yet been presented to the board in a final version, and that that's coming up shortly. There hasn't really been much discussion about that, which is a little surprising. But getting back to the bathrooms, I don't remember seeing anything in their proposal regarding bathrooms right by the playground. I'm wondering, well, let me just keep it simple. I would like to see this happen in the right order. I feel like the board has not identified this as a priority, and I thought the board decided previously that the proper order of things before any work is done toward a new grant would be for the board to decide what the priorities are, instruct the mayor that those are the grants you wanna pursue, and then go forward from there. And it seems to me like it's happening backwards again, where the mayor is pursuing grants based on a perceived priority that the board has not actually decided on. So I just wanna see things done in the right order. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Yes?
Okay, yeah, next. Western Colorado Community Foundation. Exploring funding for board retreat?
Right.
At the last meeting, you said you were gonna.
And that's because I haven't gotten anything back from the community foundation, and so I, and this was submitted prior to that.
So which is it? You're paying for it? Okay, now, what is the public attendance at this?
It's an open meeting.
Is it open? So, are you gonna pay for everybody's transportation?
No, I am paying for, I'm paying for the meeting room, the rooms that the board members will stay in overnight, catering.
Why don't you just have it in Peonya? Make it easier.
Sometimes it's really helpful to get out and away, and it's my dollars.
Oh, wow, and trustees have nothing to say about that. Okay.
Ms. Drew?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mark?
I think we had a couple of hands up. There are so, trustees, Stelter, trustee Smith, and myself.
Well, I mean, Mr. Brinched the podium. Let's let Mr. Brin have his say, and then we'll finish up. Because I did ask the board, and nobody had anything else, so we opened it up to the public. Yes, Mr. Brin.
Given that there's a line in the constitution and there are state statutes that prohibit receiving a gift for anything of value over $50, how is the board not gonna be in violation of that statute accepting your gift of the financing for this retreat that you have decided on without their input and stated that, that you're paying for it, you get to set the agenda? I, I think that there's a disconnect there that. I mean, that's like an anti-bribery statute. How, how can they, how can the people on the board accept that without being a violation of the law?
Okay, well, I'll.
That's my question.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Mark?
Regarding the board retreat, proposed board retreat, I think, first, Bill, you're right, except the mayor always sets the agenda. So it doesn't matter if she's, we're there on her dime or not. The, I, I think that I cannot in good conscience attend a retreat that is an hour and a half away, being paid for by the mayor. And, basically, I will not attend it under these discussed circumstances.
So what, what circumstances would you attend it in?
I think if it is somewhere more accessible to our public and preferably somewhere that doesn't charge a fee.
Okay. We still have a facilitator that needs to be paid.
I don't know, I have no answer. Is that a question?
Well, would you have a problem with the facilitator being paid?
Depends on the source of funds, I suppose.
Okay. Ms.?
Yeah, I just have to say, I don't remember ever talking about a retreat in Glenwood. It was, first time I heard about it was.
Oh, it's not.
I mean, Grand Junction. Glenwood, I'm, no, just kidding. Just kidding.
That's a trend.
I'm sorry, but I don't remember us discussing a retreat out of town in Grand Junction and you paying for it. And we haven't voted on this. I, I'm not comfortable, this is a board decision. This is not a mayor's decision, I'm sorry.
Well, I did organize two other retreats. But in, in.
I'm not saying you can't do it. You can't physically pull it off and make it possible. I have not voted on a retreat, and no one asked me about a retreat. I learned about it when I had my calendar out and said, I can't go that weekend. So, I'm sorry, I really think we need to talk about this as a board on many levels. I'm not against a retreat, but I can't be voluntold. I'm sorry.
You can't be what?
Voluntold to come, okay. And I feel like I am, because I had no input on this. I don't even, you know, I don't even know who's being paid to do it, who you've asked to come or anything. I know nothing about it. I'm not against a retreat, but, so I'll stop there, because I think it should be an agenda item, frankly.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
I just had a point that I was uncomfortable with having you pay for my going to a retreat and that I would pay for my own way, just because, I'm just uncomfortable with that. It, it doesn't seem right. So, I need a, need a budget. That's all.
Okay. Alright, so we can put this on the agenda for the next week. And I can continue to, I can go back to Western Colorado Community Foundation and see if they will provide a grant to pay for this. For? If we agree to have a retreat.
Here's my question. What do you, how much are you asking for if, whether we, if we're in town, it'd be a lot cheaper than if we go out of town. So are you giving it a range to ask for the funding?
Well, we can decide that at the next week.
Okay. You're gonna wait to ask to be, okay.
And then I can come back.
I didn't know if the ask was pre or post-meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Oh, yes, Ms. Patterson?
Yep, thank you. So I did send the board comments related to the retreat. I have not received a response from any board members, so I was wondering if someone could just confirm that those were received.
Okay. You understand that?
I'm sorry, did you say you couldn't understand me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I said I sent by email all of the board members some comments regarding the retreat. And since I have not received a response from any board member, I'd just like to confirm that you all received that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, as the public, I would like to know how much this facilitator is, who he is, what are his credentials? You said you had a consultant last time. Have you already paid for a consultant? It's like, none of these board members know, like, and what sort of is the agenda or team building? It's, I think this has to absolutely go through the board. And, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other questions in the mayor's report? Alright, moving on, staff report. Questions from staff?
I will just say that you have the information that's provided in the packet. There's a couple of dates in there. I also wanted to let the board know of two things. Tomorrow is Arbor Day, and there's two tree plantings that are going to be facilitated, tree plantings tomorrow. The first one is at 10:00 AM in front of Town Hall. And the second one is at 1:30 at the Peonya K8, which was the old high school, junior high high school. So I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. I also wanted the board to be aware that the Learning Council and the Forest Service are working together Friday, May 6th, hosting what they are calling a Street Stewart Litter Cleanup Day. And if any trustees or anyone would like to participate, the open time is from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And, let's see, they will be meeting at Town Park.
Which day was that?
Uh, Friday, May 6th. Town is providing a dumpster at the Votek and the Town Park for them to have somewhere to throw the trash as, once, as they clean it up with the students and community members. But other than that, if anyone wanted to participate, the, the first one they're doing only with students. And at 1:00 to 3:00, they'll be doing it at the, with the community and the, also the NIFSA students. And they'll meet at Town Parks.
Good, thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, seeing that, anything from the public?
Actually, I have, I just wanna make, are we looking at April 14th or 28th?
Either. I, I put both in there.
April, for the administrative report. I just have a question on the April 14th. And it may be a moot question at this point.
Yes.
Providing ongoing information and communications with parties involved in our system. This is a good list. SGM, JDS, Hardrow, SSG, Delta County, uh, Delta County Health Department and Emergency Services. I wondered what their role they're playing now with our water system?
Clarification, so, nothing. I just have to, I inform them. So when anything happens with the water system, or, so if we have a break and I'm doing those posts and things online, I'm also required to notify our local CDPG, which is our account, Delta County Health Department, and Delta County Emergency Services works with Delta County Health Department. So when I send something to Greg Ranowski, Chris Stewart also receives that, and he's Emergency Services.
Then it costs us a thing, doesn't it? Thank you. Except your time.
Right. So yes, it costs you something.
Yes, Mr. Brin.
Will the commercial multifamily use of buildings on Grand Avenue be on the agenda at the next meeting?
What we, the only thing that we're gonna discuss on that is the definitions in the code.
I'm sorry, did we decide that?
Yes.
When did we decide that?
At the meeting, at the last meeting.
Did the trustees decide?
It was a discussion-only meeting, so.
Right, and so we said with the.
Wasn't there a motion that was passed at the last meeting?
It was a discussion.
All items would be action items on the agenda?
Yeah, but this was the meeting prior.
It was. So.
It was the meeting prior.
Yeah. As I understand it, I don't recall the exact purbiage of the motion, but I can find it.
Yeah, and that was the last meeting. This was the meeting prior to that, when it was discussed as a discussion item.
Therefore, the, the next meeting should be an action item as it comes in the future.
Yeah, exactly.
It is an action item.
So it is an action item.
Yes, right.
So it is on the agenda.
Yes. And it's the definitions that we will be looking at in the code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of, I think it's better to start with motions related to the administrator's report so that we can discuss items.
We can discuss items without a motion.
That's what I'm saying, because I tend to make motions regarding the administrator's report rather than asking a question. It seems like a lot of the time, we ask questions to the administrator and then have a dialogue. I prefer to preface the discussion with a motion.
Okay.
So I move to direct staff to produce a statement from our insurer regarding the storage of vehicles off-site and on private property.
Me?
What vehicles?
A second probably would be.
Oh, second, okay.
So, I noticed that there is a public works vehicle that's parked regularly on 133 West of Town. Like way out of town, several miles, probably six miles or so. And I understand that this was a practice under, with previous employees, that they would drive work trucks home. And I'm not trying to take a stance or ask anybody else to take a stance on whether or not we should permit that. If you guys wanna address that, that's a different discussion. What I'm asking for is a statement from our insurer as to that practice, like regarding that practice.
Okay. Any discussion from the board on that? Okay, anything from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, a motion passed.
Okay. Next motion would be to affirmatively add the 211 and a half nav retrieve removal incident as an agenda item on the May 12th meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Next, I can, I think it's okay to ask, begin with a question to Corinne for this. As I recall, and maybe, maybe Bakren and trustee can get some to weigh on this, because they were there. It was board direction at the time that we began the search for a chief of police, that, that process would be directed by the board?
No.
No.
Or the, actually, as I have it here, the personnel committee. Is that not correct?
I specifically asked the board for permission to engage with the town administrator, and the two of us would work on the hiring of a police chief. Police chief does not report to the board.
Right.
That person reports to the town administrator. What made me want to pursue that was something that I read in the Grand Junction Sentinel, which kinda disturbed me as a trustee, because Palisade was hiring a police chief and had nothing to do with the board. The board wasn't involved in the process at all. The town administrator just went ahead and. So, I wanted to be involved in that process, plus I have experience with recruiters, and this was one of the first times we were gonna use a recruiter. So we used Chris Law from GPS Government Solutions. Just last week, he sent both of us, the top candidates. Corinne and I just had a confidential discussion this week about what the next steps might be in moving forward and whether to bring candidates in and whether the expenditure will spend money in travel. It's entirely feasible that the travel expenses might be over the $5,000 limit on expenditures. So, if it is going to be, we wanna bring those to the board to get approval, the board, that we can spend those money. But that's where we sit right now. It's very likely we bring in two. It's very likely we bring in two, possibly three candidates. But he, our recruiter has, I was very impressed with the services we got. The way he vetted the candidates, the matrix he used, the input that he took from community members. He came here to town to get input from people in order to figure out what are the criteria that he wants to use. He did a very big job of that. So we had, I think, three strong candidates, there might be a fourth, but that's where it sits right now.
Thanks, yeah, I wasn't sure if that's to the level, I understood that you were to be involved, I wasn't sure as to the level. I wanted to make sure that that was expressly.
Just so the board knows, I told, I mentioned to Corinne that I don't have to be in the funnel interviews, but I think that the mayor or someone on the board ought to be part of it, and think closely about what community members would be good. Might be the fire chief, it might be people that interact with the, they're not the kind I'm thinking about right now, but, you know what I'm saying.
You mean the ones that, not the ones in the blotter?
Exactly. Although, maybe that input would be interesting. All right, so, yeah. That's where it sits.
Okay. Next motion is to form an ad hoc IT committee to review existing solutions, subscriptions, and assets, and make suggestions.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion from the board?
The numbers that I've seen, I mentioned this at the previous meeting, I think just merit a much closer book. I don't know the status of our contract with some of our vendors. I know that there are some we do have contracts with, I think that those should be reviewed. And in my cursory readings, I found that the SIPA, let's see, what the statewide internet portal authority, which is how we get our internet service now, or.
Internet service.
Also provides a bunch of other services that we might want to leverage, including a creation of online forms for documents, hosting software solutions, we can get discounts or free access to all kinds of different software through these guys. And I think that, as we all know, staff is very busy. I think it would be an appropriate move to create an ad hoc committee for this specific task so that we might be able to free up a lot of staff time by introducing a new tool to their toolbox.
All right, discussion, other discussion from the board? From the public, Mr. Brandon.
This latest attempt at the AV system apparently works fairly well for people that are watching on the internet, but it leaves out people that take the time to come here and be here. On a meeting, a small meeting like this, sitting up close, you guys are all, you know, easy to hear, but sitting in the back of the room when there's people here, even when everyone in the room is quiet except you guys, half of what goes on up there is impossible to hear in the back of the room. There is no amplification for the audience anymore. And, I mean, that used to be the reason to come to the podium, so everyone could hear what you had to say. And so I just, like this perfect segue to say, you know, what's going on, maybe we can fix that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Yeah, yes.
Christina Patterson, with regards to that, it was also very nice when that was placed, the camera in the back, so you could actually see a historic rendering of how many people were here, people at the podium, you can't see that. And it's hard to follow the meeting when it's not comprehensive like that with things.
Ms. Watson?
I'm wondering when you can look at maybe making trustee emails available, the ones that are, I think there's a lot of email communication going on. I'm really curious to know, I'm sure there are ones that are actually appropriate for the public, maybe some of them might be private, but there's a lot of, I think, a lot of emailing going on. I just get the sense that things are being discussed out of public view. And I don't know if that can be put somehow, if we can look into that, other communities who have done that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, yes, Mr..
I wanted to test something. Been working with Jeff on the meeting stuff. Jeff and I spent a lot of time together going over this and trying to hash it out. And at one time, I think, Mr. Brandon joined us, and I let Suzanne know about it, could go over our meetings. But, like, just recently, John, as a new trustee, wanted to understand more about what the rationale was for our proposal, and asked if I could, if I could provide him some time to explain that to him, so I did. But is that conducting public business? I mean, lawyer's shaping your hand there, and that's why I'm testing this. There was myself and John.
Right.
Serial.
From the way, I understand the open meetings law, that's a serial meeting. That if a, but if, if, no, you worked it out with Jeff, and then you talk to Mr. Valentine. As three to three elected officials.
Jeff was no longer on the board.
Actually, that's an interesting technicality, if he were still on the board.
Well, of course I wouldn't.
Well, I don't know, that's, I just, I don't know. That's three trustees, whether they're on the board now or not.
What's the honor?
I know that's European, that's, you know.
I think we'd be able to lawyers' opinion on that one.
Right, well, you might have, but.
Well, naturally, no, naturally, we can ask Sam Lou when he comes.
It's a very interesting point, and I'm glad we agree that if you were all concurrently on the board, that would be.
Absolutely.
You have to be careful.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, sorry.
I have a few things, but there were, I have an issue also with this hard stop at 9:30, and you conversing with trustee Valentine saying partners in crime, that we are like stopping this meeting. And I, I think that's a disservice to this town, really, I, I think.
You can discuss this when we get to the ad hoc committee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we will discuss all of this.
Okay, that's one thing, and then, sorry, I don't know, I think it's under the administrator report. Who is calling the police here for every meeting? That Patrick was here for three hours, the whole, do we really need a police person here?
Chief Ferguson used to sit in on every meeting, the whole thing.
There were two police, and then, but Chief Ferguson had a role because he was conversing with people and saying what was, what's going on in the police department. Why is Patrick here, I would really like to know. What, do people feel threatened, or who calls him, who's in charge of that? Who calls Patrick to be here for that whole meeting?
Who? Nobody?
Yeah.
I was just, I was just waiting for questions about the report. So I was told to have an officer in the room when we have our meetings, and so I do so.
By whom?
Who told you?
By the mayor.
Oh, me.
Why?
And Officer Kramer was here to teach Mr. Better how to operate the ZER. So that's why he was here at the last meeting.
And it has seemed that there is less disturbance and public outrage when there is a person. People are more, are better behaved.
I'm not, it's not that you're.
So, well, I mean, there was a pretty big disturbance with this gentleman who came up, and he was very threatening. He, sort of, the whole room saw it, but the, but the policeman did nothing. But when people are golf clapping a little bit, it's all, it's a very strange situation. And I'm not, I would really question your motivation of having a policeman to threaten public. It's very strange. Also, I'm wondering why Dan Riordan was here at that whole meeting, very odd.
He chose to come, and it was not on his, it was on his own time. He was not asked to attend the meeting, he chose to come to the meeting.
Has nothing to do with the buildings going up, haze, or this, or that? I've never seen him in a meeting, it was so strange. In the three years I've been here, every meeting.
I would be making an assumption, but my assumption would be, since there were discussions that were about specific building projects and permits, that that may be why he came. But he did, was not asked to come to the meeting, and I knew he was coming to the meeting when he showed up at the meeting.
And actually, he shouldn't have been on a panel, he should have been in the audience, and.
This is a back and forth.
And, okay, I, okay, one more thing is, yeah, I lost it, okay. Oh, and I'm hoping that in the next meeting, that this, when we're talking about the Colorado code, that it's not so narrow so that it can't be fully discussed, that if you're trying to make it really definitions of code and nothing else, that we need to discuss probably comprehensively more than that, thank you.
Thank you, yes, Ms. Patterson, Michelle.
Thank you, I'm jumping back a little bit, can I speak to the, well, maybe not, I think there's still a motion on the table about an ad hoc IT committee, is that accurate?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
That's what we're supposed to be discussing.
Thank you, so, there, there was a public comment about making the emails public, and I just want to say I agree with that strongly, this is not the first time it's come for discussion, but nothing has come of it so far, so I hope that an ad hoc IT committee could take a closer look at that. And I just wanted to give an example of Estes Park in Colorado, who has on their website a button that says access mayor and trustee email, and it goes to a Google group where you can review their emails in real time. I'm seeing emails from this evening on there, so I think that would be really helpful if maybe we could use that as an example, thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Do the motion.
Yes, I would ask you to repeat it, Thomas, because I didn't get the whole thing prepared.
Move to form an ad hoc IT, that is, Internet Technology Committee to review existing solutions, subscriptions, and assets, and make suggestions to the board.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion passes. All right, who would like to volunteer for an ad hoc committee with Mr. Markle? Someone else would like to serve with Mr. Markle on this? All right, Mr. Valentine, all right. Go for it, guys.
Thanks.
All right, so, have we dealt with 211 and a half?
Yes.
That sufficiently?
That was passed, yeah.
Okay, so now the only thing left is the Turner Ditch. Project, well, life recognition project.
Turning to the previous motion?
We don't have a previous motion, though, once.
That was, that was the.
Yeah, there's two items on the agenda, one was the 211 and a half issue, which has been.
Are you moving past the administrator's report?
Oh, you still have questions, I thought everyone had.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought that everybody had asked their questions.
Yeah. No, I had a couple more things, sorry, 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 everybody. So, let's see what this note pertains to. One of the items at the bottom of page 66, all right, this is in the old packet, I want the new numbers. Follow-up from the previous meeting on April 28th, I'll read the whole paragraph. In 2020 and 2021, following conversations with then Public Works Committee Bill Berry, Tammy McReport II, and discussed with the board on committee reports, there was the recommendation to move forward with the general services contract with SGM. Should the board wish to do a cost comparison with other engineering firms, I'd be compiling the information. It's my understanding that all contracts and purchases over $5,000 are to be competitive. So using a determination that there was no motion behind, as I'm reading this, it was a recommendation of the board, but not of, of the committee, rather, but not a motion of the board that determined that this firm should be used?
But, yeah, we never signed a contract with them.
Right, so, do I need to propose that we follow the purchasing policy, or is that to be understood?
Well, if you want to make a motion that would direct the town administrator to do a cost comparison.
I feel like that's, that should be unnecessary.
To make a motion to do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm not sure what course of action would be correct. I just feel like this is a, something that happens perhaps quite a bit, or has happened this year quite a bit. And I would like to make sure that it stops with this board.
Well, and so if the administrator would like to bring cost comparisons, and then we can vote on them. Yes?
I was just to stay, again, I was just providing information because there was a question at the meeting from board members on how that occurred, that we were, because they were presented with a single source contract, and that's how that occurred.
Thank you.
Yes?
Can I just, I have a comment regarding this very same topic. And it, based on this, I'm really concerned about Brandon coming to this meeting for this agenda item on the next agenda. Are we paying him to come?
It's not only that agenda item, it was the other two also that the board had asked to bring back.
Okay.
And, and yes, he would be compensated for his time.
And travel, see, I'm just wondering if we couldn't, instead of paying a consultant, if we couldn't do that through Zoom? I know he doesn't like it, but we're paying travel for him, and we have.
We haven't, we haven't paid for his travel, he has done it on his own time, but I would just say, I would assume if he did bill, we would compensate him for his time.
So I'm just wondering if he is going to bill us, and we should probably know that ahead of time, maybe he should.
I will, I will ask him that.
Okay, and then I was, I also had a comment similar to Thomas's, that I think we need to be looking at the, at the purchasing policy a lot more than we are. And in this case, we really need to do more bids. And, and I, this is a future thing, I really think we need to revisit and update the public, our purchasing policy.
Yeah, that, yeah, we got that.
Right, and we definitely need to get that on higher up on the radar.
Make a motion about that, please.
I would like to make a motion, but.
Did we, let me ask a question first, did we have an ad hoc committee to look at that at some point?
We did, and we have that proposal, the board had decided to wait to look at it because of all the other impending things they were looking at. And so it was completed, it's just never been brought back and adopted by the board.
And was trustee Butterger on the ad hoc committee? Because she had talked to me about helping her with the FEMA language.
Right.
Not to be included, and I said, oh, I looked at it and said, I don't think I'm comfortable doing that. So that's probably where it stopped.
Right, we got information on how to link the FEMA information to it, but it hasn't gone, it hasn't come back then, that was the last piece.
Yeah, and by the way, that was as a citizen, not as a trustee. So, where are we?
Well, it seems like it does need to come back to the board. My concern is, we have already stacked a whole lot on the next agenda, and so I don't think that putting it on, we're going to get to it unless we stay until 11 o'clock at night. So if we put it off until the end of May or the beginning of June.
I would, I could look at that, would you like a motion to that effect?
Yes.
So we don't lose it. I make a motion that we revisit the town's purchasing policy for revisions, et cetera, at the second meeting in May. No, wait a minute, I'm sorry, first meeting in June, sorry, I might have mixed up.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Sorry. That would be the first meeting, the ninth, is that right?
It is, yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion from the board? Leanne?
Michelle.
Yes. Board goes first, yes, Michelle.
Thank you, so, I, I just wanted to comment on the statement that there's a really full agenda for the next meeting, and so that this couldn't be included on that, and I don't doubt that that's the case, but the board hasn't seen a full picture of what they should expect on the next agenda. So I feel like if that's known, then it should also be possible to present draft agendas to the board to help the board make informed decisions about what goes on which agenda, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right. Anything else, yes, Mr. Brandon?
Yeah, there's a draft agenda that's available with the trustees, I feel like that should be available with the public as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Markle?
I haven't seen any draft agendas. Well, one thing, I want to correct myself, I said Internet Technology, she said Information Technology, I was incorrect, sorry. Back to the administrator's report.
No, we're, we have a motion on the table to bring the purchasing policy back.
Oh, right, 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 I'm sorry.
First meeting, too. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that motion passes, all right, now, Mr. Markle.
So regarding the Police Department partner support, it looks like this document, and this is something I brought up as a citizen, and I feel so fortunate now that I'm sitting on the board to be able to move towards it. This is a document that must have been produced by town, must exist electronically, and it was printed and scanned back into this packet. as an image.
Okay. Is that true?
No. I did not print the document. It was handed to me when I asked for it, and I scanned it in and attached it to the packet.
Okay.
So this was not produced by town?
Yes, it was produced by a town employee who I asked at the last minute to add, to create and provide to me.
Okay, yes.
And it was provided to me.
The answer is yes.
No, it was handed to me. I did not print it and then scan it in, and they do not scan things in and put them in the packet.
My question wasn't by an employee to answer the yes.
Yes, it was produced by an employee.
Okay. So our administrator has the ability to direct this employee to send the file. The record that's produced by this, by scanning a, a document that's handed or however, whatever the process was, that got this here in this format, destroys the underlying information so that we can try and rebuild it through optical character recognition, try and get a machine to read this, right, OCR. That's imperfect and unnecessary. All these documents should be made from electronic originals. Okay? So, and here I've gone off, off topic and avoided my, my motion. But I move to direct staff to never print and scan documents where we have access to existing electronic originals. Okay? I'll repeat it. Direct staff to never print and scan documents that have existing electronic originals. And to continue speaking towards this motion. It's only beneficial all around. This saves staff time because we no longer have to print the documents. I'll just read what I wrote here. Public documents like the packet and budget should be legible, searchable, high fidelity, well-formatted, consistent, compact, and expediently created. The inclusion of printed and scanned documents like this one, for which we have the original electronic versions, which exists in town somewhere, is wasteful in every way. The creation process requires. I'm sorry?
I didn't know what you're talking about.
Okay. The creation process requires you creates, uh, uh, requires unnecessary use of paper, toner, printer wear, staff time to physically retrieve a copy. Likewise, for the scanning process. Fidelity is lost in the process, even if OCR is used, it's imperfect, and it's also unnecessary. Some pages in the past year's budgets are complete, like hardly legible. It seems as if they've been faxed and scanned, faxed and scanned in tiny print. It's almost like it's on purpose. Inconsistent formatting leads to confused and confusing message. File sizes for scanned documents are always higher, and most importantly, the ability to search for keywords within a document is eliminated. Like if I wanted to find, do a search for when we had the police report talking about CRS 24310932, I would never know it is here unless I read through every page of every packet that's ever been printed myself. Whereas it takes seconds, right? I can't estimate how much time has been spent by myself alone searching through past year's budgets and packets, whereas if they've been properly created, a search would be immediate. This policy follows the spirit of sunshine laws and allows for a more transparent, accessible, and efficient government. For both, yes?
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Briner?
Well, first of all, in my time on the board, which is now a number of years, this is the very best pantheon of police report I've ever seen. It really details exactly what was going on rather than a blow-by-blow incident report that I couldn't make head and tails out of. So I guess why I'm confused about what you're trying to do right now is, and let me see if I can restate what the concern is.
Okay.
Because this was not a Word file or something like that, that could be then, because it was scanned in, then you couldn't look at specifics like if you were trying to look at a state statute or something.
So if, if I wanted to find, this one mentions prescription drugs, right? And I want to speak to prescription drugs.
Right.
And, and, and 10 weeks from now. And I'm, I'm like, oh, it was a thing about the prescription drugs back in one of the packets, right? The only way for me to find that would be to flip through all the pages of all the packets. Whereas if I have all of the files where, like, these, these non-scanned images are, are PDFs presumably, right, rather than the image format, that prescription drugs, I can do a Ctrl-F, find and search for that thing and leave the rest of the, I can go eat a sandwich, come back, and it'll be waiting for me, you know? Like, I think that that's only a good thing.
What I'm trying to understand is, is it a requirement that in the packet there is an editable document or in the packet a PDF is sufficient?
It's, I, I don't know if editable is necessary. I think that PDF is generally not editable. So it's, you know, print to PDF rather than.
Search.
Right, so, so like print to PDF rather than print to printer. And this is where the workflow comes in. Print to printer, right? Walk from your station to the printer, take the print, or get handed from somebody else, right? Take the print and put it on the thing, feed it through the machine, create a file. Whereas what you could have done is created a file.
From the electronic version of this.
Correctly, yeah.
One page.
Yeah, and it's, it's like basically if, from a, from an operations perspective, like efficiency in operations, this is really low hanging fruit, right? This can save everybody a lot of time and hassle and make it better for everybody who participates in this process. Stay tuned, we'd like to talk more.
Yeah, two things. Yeah, I do go back through old packets, and it is very time consuming to look at the agenda and then decide, would that be right? So it's very time consuming. There, if there was a way to search these agendas moving forward, it would be so cool. My second question is, you have this done by, doesn't MutiCodes put this packet together or something?
No, I do.
Oh, you do. Oh, I, you've mentioned MutiCodes before in reference to the packet. So I thought you sent it out to someone else. Okay, so the ability is there to build it like this?
Yes, so I, I understand the direction, and I would like to say that I'm all for more efficiency, and I hearken back to five years ago and four years ago before I introduced MutiCodes. I know about paper packets only. So continuing to move in a direction I, I don't have an issue with. There are, I will let staff know when they provide documents for reports to please email me the document instead of handing it to me in paper.
Yeah, and, and I think if you, actually as part of our newly formed ad hoc committee, I think this, this falls into that responsibility, and I'd be happy to help however we can. I took this one out as a motion specifically because I think it adds so much value to operations.
Okay, anything else coming forward? All right, from the public. Yes, Ms. Watson?
I, I think you understand trustee Markle's point. It's, we've discussed it quite a bit, but an example is if you just try to search this packet with the word "police", this page will not come up. I mean, very simply. And then you also can't highlight like a word in it if you want, if you want to pick something out and remember to ask a question about it. And then, that being said, are we going to, is this a new format here where we are not going to have the crime reporting anymore? Or was this just a verbal update like a chief would do?
This was the, this is just, I asked for a status update. The blotter will still be provided, the first packet of each month for the prior one.
Okay, and then just a quick question about a men report with the ORC. Your timeline schedule said interviews were the first week of May 2022, and then the board action was the third week of May. So who's doing the interviews? Is this something the board is going to be engaged in, interviewing the contractor, or are interviews actually happening?
This, the interviews and discussion with the contractors are, I get that information so that I can provide my recommendation to the board, but then the board would receive the information provided by the contractor as well as the recommendation to make the decision on who to provide the contract to.
Okay, so the board never meets the contractor face to face before they make their decision? They just rely on your recommendation?
They typically meet the person if they come to the meeting. That's usually when the board talks to them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on people.
Great, I have a comment on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would support it, and I would add, if I were making it, that financial documents should be presented in a spreadsheet format, even if they are read-only, so that the formulas and the totals can be traced back through the cells because the day is coming when the whole thousand pages that go into the final pages of the documents are public. And so I think starting, moving that direction with the acknowledgement that this financial information core requires that be provided and the format maintained by the town, that is a spreadsheet format. And so that's, you're moving in the right direction. There's a long ways to go.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion for, to direct staff to never print and scan any documents that have an electronic original. Yes, Ms. Ferguson? No, okay, all right.
Yeah, that, that could be, hearing it right back, that's very, very broad.
Okay, well, read your motion again, then, Thomas.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't realize it till, but if you, if you listen to the words, never print and scan documents that have existing electronic originals.
Yeah.
That's for inclusion in, in doc, in.
Documents.
Provided, yeah, provided documents. That is for inclusion in other documents. I don't want them to never print and scan documents.
Okay, so then I think you.
Right. Well, yeah, 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 okay. For, uh, print and scan di, uh, I don't know of a more succinct way to, to phrase it. Any, but any suggestions?
Yeah, Mr. Briner?
I have a shot at it. So if a document is available in electronic format, then it shall be placed in the packet in that format.
Fair, yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
Generated.
Sorry?
Generated, rather.
Thank you.
It was deleted. It's no longer available.
Okay, so if a document is generated in electronic format, it should be, it shall be placed in the packet in that format.
Go moved.
Okay, seconds?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Anything else, Thomas?
Yes. I'm sorry. Regarding the, this thing, I think that just exactly what Mr. Briner said, an electronic copy of this would be very helpful.
There is one. It's in the packet.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Unusable.
Keep Mr. Briner's.
Even, even when I so handed it, it was impossible to go through.
Right, for one, it's, it's illegible. Yeah, the, the, the format makes it illegible in, in this. And then additionally, what I would like to do is say, okay, something is addressed. All the green stuff is superfluous, right, for the purposes of planning? So I would like to take this document and edit it so that all the green stuff is gone, or at least moved off of it to the bottom, right? So in, in order for me to make good use of this information, which is great, by the way, I think this is really neat, and I think this is based off of that SSG thing. But I think in order to be really truly useful, we need access to the file that created this, right? And I'm hearing a lot of hesitation from.
No, there's no hesitation at all.
Regarding readability, I think editability was a conversation that happened quite a bit with, when Charles Stewart was mayor. He had concerns about bad actors misrepresenting town documents, which can be addressed through technological answers. But I just like to, I suppose that this may be subsumed by my previous motion or by work that we're talking about here.
Sure.
But I just want to see, like, rather than, you know, I'm seeing page 89 has just this little corner.
Exactly, exactly.
It's not, it's not.
And that's all it's on?
Yeah, yeah, but even, like, just a link to the file would have been great, you know? Like, an online version of this file, and here is a link, you know? So that it's not in the packet, it's in the packet.
Yeah, and the only thing that I would say is that for the people like Mr. Thompson, who prefer to have paper stuff, who could see it better on paper stuff, I mean.
Yeah, by, by all means, if somebody wants something printed.
Okay.
I think that that's.
I guess for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but by default, I mean, like, I'm, you may as well throw this thing in the shredder. I will never use it. I'm sorry.
Right, whereas I find it very unfriendly.
I understand, yeah, but, but, as just as a standing request.
Yeah.
Don't be that one. Okay.
It's a working document for staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
That was.
Couple, couple more things. I'm sorry, I'm almost done. So I see under the April 14th, again, the old packet, page 90. I'll see if I can open it. Cross reference, page 28? Right, page 27 in this state's packet. There's an item there that says, we're going to present and be an implication of a plan to be provided by CD PAT for bringing the 1 million gallon plant online, and it's marked underway. I haven't heard anything about this as a member of the Advisory Water Committee and as a very interested citizen and now a board member. I can't believe I missed this on the last packet, but I move that we task the Advisory Water Committee with reviewing this plan.
Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
I provided verbally, and I don't know if it was at the 14th meeting because we didn't get to this item, and it may have been the, the previous, and this was a carryover, which I've also had feedback about the report that people would like me not to carry over previous reported information, that CD PAT had their engineers were looking at the product, the project, and ultimately decided they didn't need to tell us a direction on how to do that. So what they're, we have to work with them as we go through and once all, as they're going through and, and give them updates on where we're at with all of the corrections and repairs and things that needed to be made in the plant. But they are not providing a step-by-step that we need to follow to bring the 1 million back online.
So my, my motion was
To task me to.
To task the AWC with reviewing this plan.
There is, there is no plan.
Right. And procedurally, I suppose we should dispose of that motion.
Yes.
So I'll.
Yes.
Recid my motion. But as a substitute, I move that we task the AWC with creating a plan for bringing the 1 million gallon plant, 1 million gallon plant.
Can I add?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, we do, in my lovely paper copy, there are multiple entries for the Clark Water Treatment Plant.
Right, right, yeah.
That, I, I don't know if.
Sorry.
Anything, if, if, if this is, if this is what, let's, let me back up. Does this constitute what needs to be done at the 1 million gallon plant to get it up and running? Is there more to be looked at by consultants? I, so.
So the steps that needed to be taken are already being taken. The, it's, this, we don't need anyone to come in and draft what steps need to happen. It's already done.
Okay. Mike, can I just state my concern, please?
Yes, please.
Okay. Nobody knows that's true. Okay, we've, we've been completely taken blindsided by the state of our, our water treatment plants in the past three months, right? We don't, we haven't had anyone who's a representative, elected representative, or even an appointed committee member put eyes on the 1 million gallon plant in the intervening months, right? The people that I trust, my neighbors, not a consultant, not somebody who's been working with us for a long time. I want their take on what needs to happen in order to get that online. And I understand that we have been taking the word of our administrator for things like this, that they are being done, that there is a plan, and that everything is under control. And that may be the case. I'm not saying it's not. What I'm asking for is a second opinion created by the Advisory Water Committee.
So what you really would like is the Advisory Water Committee to sit down with the administrator or whoever is working.
I want them to go to the. I want them to go to the plant and tell me what needs to be fixed and replaced to get it working.
Ms. Ferguson?
Can I ask how they would know that?
Yes.
Well, we have, uh,
Engineer.
Committee members who operate plants, have operated plants, are qualified water operators in the state of Colorado who have historic engineering experience. And I presume that they would have the full support of our administration and staff, where the ORC would meet with them, do a plant tour, they would have access to materials that have already been provided by CDPAT for their plan that did not need to be implemented or developed. They would have information regarding this, right?
The staff.
The AWC should be provided. Whatever happened with CDPAT, AWC should be abreast of it so that they can keep us informed.
Yes, Ms. Ferguson?
I never know when the appropriate time is for staff to actually, or for me to actually, um, converse with the board as an entirety. I really don't. But I will say that, uh, again, I think we're looking backwards, and I understand where we all were and the information was being taken. But steps have been put in place and people have been put in place so that does not happen again. I do not have a problem taking or having anyone, again, which is why we put a facility access, um, policy on record. It's now part of our process. Um, there's, this is not an issue. But I think that, uh, and as I believe was stated today, even when you were out on the sewer tour, um, lots of people have amazing licenses, including Mr. Sirianni, and to run and operate the plants that he operates. But you have information on, to get licensed, on tests that are required, site sampling and numbers and things like that. But that does not automatically mean you can walk into any plant and be able to say, yes, I've gone through this plant for one hour, two hours, five hours. And I now can tell you exactly what step-by-step you need to take. That is the point that I'm trying to make. Not that the AWC members, which there are, it's not even half, we don't even have a quorum, um, can't, you do, actually, based on previous actions that were made specific to it.
I think we got rid of that.
That the, I, there's no issue with them going out there. The, I take issue with stating that the board is going to direct an advisory group to say, this is the steps that you have to take to put a plant back online when they are not working in those plants and don't know that. The people that make the appropriate, who provide the appropriate mechanisms for bringing the plant online are the people who design the plant, the people who are operating the plant, and the state of Colorado who says we need to make sure these Ts are crossed and these Is are dotted in order to bring that plant back online. What they've asked for is all the equipment calibrated and operational. This is all via phone call and, and meetings that we've had, Zoom meetings. They did not provide any records or steps saved. The only thing that they have written and have clearly stated over and over is how are we going to address the standing water that's in the tank that no longer has the treatment that it needs? That is the one thing. They want the town to drain the tank, which we don't want to just drain the tank and ditch it. Again, like I said, I never know what the appropriate opportunity is because it doesn't seem to be ever, to be honest, ever. Administrator report, opportunity to ask questions about what was provided in the report, which we've done a lot of none of that this evening, and an opportunity to ask questions so that I can respond. And I don't feel that any response is ever, um, accepted or well received. So I'll stop there.
Okay.
I feel like we've gotten away from the motion.
Pardon?
Regarding questions and communication, I think the question should be taken offline so we're not wasting people's time, which is how I approached. Uh, this was specifically requested by email, and I got, uh, uh, no response. So, uh.
That's an inaccurate statement, trustee Markel.
Um, so, I dig, I, I know your objection to, to the notion that, uh, the Advisory Water Committee can make, give us advice. Um, but I want their take on it. If we task them with this, I, I feel like they are wise enough to tell us they don't know, or they're not, they're not qualified.
Um, as a, yeah, chair of the Advisory Water Committee, yeah, you know, up into one meeting, I'm looking at our purpose and study and recommend to the Board of Trustees amendments to the section of UNI code. To study and recommend to the Board actions based on any reports, infrastructure analysis, and any engineering studies commissioned. Provide scheduled meetings for people to come to that use the water system. Consider, investigate, make findings, report, recommend on any special matter or question coming within the scope of its work with the town, Public Works Department, and with the Board of Trustees. And I'm only reading this because a lot of this, I think the Advisory Water Committee was tasked with a lot of things. And I don't know if in there, the Advisory Water Committee can be expected to know whether what's happening at the one million gallon plant is appropriate. Me personally, I couldn't. I mean, I learned a lot at the two million, but I certainly couldn't tell you the one million. But what I do think would be reasonable is for us to set up, um, a probably a separate meeting or where the committee members go up there just to see what's going on with, again, it'd have to be a public meeting if we had multiple trustees, but that would be a reasonable thing to do with this in tow and have, which consultant would be best to have there to explain to us what's taking place, transpiring? Could Jeremiah?
It would be the ORC and someone from our water, specific water works. I know we're calling them water works, just trying to make it easier, but.
Benny and Jeremiah.
And Jordan.
And Jordan. So to me, I, Thomas, I, I have to say, I don't think the Advisory Water Committee has the wherewithal, even with Phil, to, to say if it's, if it's going well or not. But I do think it wouldn't hurt for us to see it so we know when it can get back online, so we know what production there is to get the moratorium dealt with. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I think that, uh, it's not gonna be like they go down there and they say, okay, they're not gonna produce the SSG list. I don't think that's, that's, that's not my ask. I want an outline, right? Um, I want a, a plan, uh, that is created by someone I trust who's knowledgeable on the issues. I feel like I'm taking crazy pills here, that I have to fight for this. So, uh, I move to call a question on the motion.
Okay, all in favor of calling a question?
Aye.
Oh, aye to call a question, yeah, thank you, sorry.
Because it means there's no more discussion.
Okay. And so I don't have a clear sense of what the motion is, Mr. Markel.
Okay, um, did you get it, or do you want me to restate? Okay, uh, to task the Advisory Water Committee. And actually, you know what, I don't think it was ever seconded.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Second.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, to task the Advisory Water Committee with producing an outline of a plan for bringing the one million gallon treatment plant, Clark Treatment Plant, online.
Okay, to task the Advisory Water Committee with producing an outline of a plan to bring one million gallon tank.
Right.
What, one million plant back online.
This is intentionally evaded. Right?
All right, we can't have any discussion, it's been called. So, um.
There was no motion, so it can't be called.
Oh, no, we need a second.
Uh, yes, for a second, sorry. A second.
All right, I'm not hearing a second, so the motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you.
So what about, um, having the Advisory Water Committee and meet with, uh, Jordan, Benny, and go up and look at the plan?
I think, well, cool idea, Mary.
I thought so too.
First gathering.
Completely.
I will work with them and get it scheduled.
Okay. All right, anything else? Yes?
One thing. Um, and where's the status of Scott Thomas of the Colorado Rural Water Association? I mean, if you're bringing him in, that would be a perfect time to really, has he been contacted or?
I've spoken with him.
And has a, a dis- been set?
No.
I need to know.
Because we have a schedule on you. I apologize for answering.
Okay, all right. Anything else on the administrator's report or staff? Yes?
Sorry. Um, I think the comments regarding the follow-up from previous meeting, page ninety of last, last week's, um, essentially, this is an abuse of the administrator's report to continue an argument with the, a member of the public. And I think that these comments are inappropriate and unnecessary. I don't know if a motion is appropriate here. Um, I feel like this is another one of those things that's, should be taken for granted, that members of staff shouldn't be continuing the arguments in any venue with members of the public. Whether or not, regardless of who's right or wrong, or who's involved, it's inappropriate.
May I ask a board question?
Yes.
Um, if you do not want me to provide the information, if the board so chooses to not let me provide any follow-up information for clarification, um, in the public packet so that the public has access to the information I'm providing, how would the board like me to provide information that I deem incorrect?
I'm, I'm specifically speaking in this statement. A community member stated that Advisory Water Committee is tasked to investigate the water facilities. Well, important to understand this, this facility, this is false. I feel like that's.
Again, so if, if as administrator I have a difference of opinion and a comment that's made and I want to express that to the board, what is the appropriate way for me to do so if it is not included in a public packet?
Can I approach the podium or not?
And I, I, I simply never name any individuals ever.
I, that's, that's, that's good. I, I feel like this, this communication is completely unnecessary to begin with.
I understand what you're saying, I'm asking the board for direction.
If I might add, I don't know that you've ever done this before.
I have.
Oh, now I remember seeing it. So this, for me, was a new, new time to see, a rebuttal.
Right.
Um, so I'm think, I'm thinking about it. I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't have an immediate answer.
So.
Now, I would certainly like to get corrective information. You know, if all statements are made, I would definitely like to see corrective information brought forward.
That was my statement, I believe. Ms. Watson, we're missing important discussion. And this, and you will give me, given a chance, let the board talk about.
Okay, it's fine. You're wasting your time.
Um, I mean, I, I have no motion regarding this.
Yeah, and I don't, um, the first thing about the variance, actually, Corinne and I had a discussion about this because I don't agree with her statement here. I don't think it's the, that the ordinance has been appropriately, um, addressed here. So I don't see that as correct, what she said there. So I don't know what that does, other than perhaps we need to bring up more about chapter sixteen as a board to talk about variances and the board appeals. But, okay.
And, and, I don't disagree, but this, this is the entire point, that there's going to be trustees who do agree with my interpretation, there will be trustees who don't agree with my interpretation. How am I supposed to give information to the board if I don't do it in the open meeting? If you don't, if I'm, if I'm, if we're moving toward having every document, including emails and memos, public documents, how am I supposed to, how am I supposed to communicate with the board? I, I'm sorry, I'm receiving a lot of mixed messages this evening.
I, I think an appropriate way, an appropriate venue for that message is a direct email to the board. So rather than, uh, using a public venue to continue a rebuttal, right? It's not productive to the public. It's, it may be beneficial information for us if we were to act on, assuming that the Advisory Water Committee is tasked to investigate the water facilities, right? Then maybe, uh, it's good to have this information, but putting it in the packet is in very poor taste.
Well, so my only, again, since we're discussing just my report, what I would state to that is that often, um, information that is, um, misinterpreted or inaccurate is stated as fact in a board meeting and, which is a public venue. And if there's no opportunity to ever provide any additional information in the public forum, then that becomes the fact. But again, I've asked the board, and I think you're right, we're wasting time just going back and forth on it, I've asked the board for direction. If they do not want, if you do not want me to provide any other information, I, I'm not sure exactly what information you, you would want me to provide in the report exactly. But if you don't want me to do any follow-up from previous meeting updates, how would you prefer that I provide you that information? Would you prefer that it was in a memo in an email? And maybe this is something we have to come back to and never be answered.
I think that's something we're going to have to think about.
Way out there.
Cause it, could it potentially be part of the meeting, um, Jeff, the upcoming ad hoc committees meeting? Um, another thing to add to that when we talk about Dave and Jeff, I don't know. It seems like it is sort of associated with a meeting. And how would that be dealt with? And do it under that venue? Cause I honestly don't know what, I don't have an opinion at the very moment.
Yeah.
Um, what, what would we do? What should be done with this? So maybe we punt, we continue it and add it to that.
Yeah, that might be a better venue.
Yes, Ms. Watson?
Okay, so, I don't like the fact that it says a community member because how can anybody respond to that charge? So I'm just assuming it was me. So I went back and I watched the YouTube video to see exactly what I said. I mean, I think that's the truth, don't you think? That's what, that's the truth, those are the words I said. And I said, the Water Advisory Committee is tasked to investigate. I didn't say the water to make investigations. I did not say the water facilities. You can go and listen to the YouTube video, but don't put misinformation about something I said in the packet thinking that that's what you heard, because that's not what I said. And we have proof forever on the internet now, if you go to the YouTube. And I do have the timestamp on that, I just, I wasn't prepared to talk about that at this meeting. And then, um, finally, the, the other one about zoning board of adjustment, I did send you guys a letter about that. Um, but if you start communicating about what was said at meetings that you think was true or false, you need to let the person that's, that spoke it into that conversation because they, I'm defending myself right now. I went and I listened to the YouTube video and I did not say what you said I said here. You're putting words in my mouth. And I really am bothered by that, that you took the time to do that. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Patterson, Michelle.
Thank you. So I have just a couple of quick comments on this. The first one being that I think factual corrections are extremely important for public packets. But I think if they are truly factual corrections, then they could cite, for example, a timestamp on the meeting recording. They could cite statute, they could cite the source of the fact so that the board can be certain that what they're getting is an actual factual update, rather than someone's opinion. And then, second, I would cite, source a document that I sent to all of you. And it states this about governing body members, but I think it's true of staff as well. As the governing body, you always have the last word on every issue within the province of the governing body, so it's not necessary to argue back or to try to have the last word during public comment. Whatever is said should simply be accepted for what it is, which is public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Ms. Brennan?
Yeah, on the subject of this rebuttal, I was confused of the one about how the variance, there's no mention of the variance for the Board of Appeals. The last sentence and what was quoted by the administrator says that the Board of Appeals handles variances. So I, I just couldn't understand the reference that was being offered. It seemed to be completely circular and self-defeating.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. President?
Um, it's nine twenty-eight, and I get criticized for leaving the meeting at nine-thirty. I'm planning to do that again, but I wanna know if anyone's having a good time right now.
Yes, yes, we're working things out.
I'm not. And I feel like the meeting itself has degenerated quite a bit as we get later and later in the evening. And that's one of the reasons I want to leave early because I find, myself, I cannot make good decisions after a meeting's been that long. So I'm just letting you know, I'm very disappointed So I'm just letting you know, I'm very disappointed that it has degenerated to the level it has.
I agree.
I'd like it to be more civil, but it seems to have gone a very negative direction. And if we continue until 10 or 11 o'clock, it'll just get worse. That's been my experience. So that's what I'm trying to do on our stop on this. I think we've proven the point tonight. Thirty seconds away from leaving.
I submit that it's the role of the chair to manage the meeting.
I'm sorry?
It's the role of the chair to manage the meeting.
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I would, I, I move that we adjourn, that we continue the Public Works Status Report and the Associated Table to the next meeting.
Okay. Public Works Stats Report, okay. Second?
Second.
All, discussion?
And I'm just saying this because that's the only thing we haven't gotten to. And I think it's important.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Yes, Ms. Briner?
Is everyone all right if the table's updated? Because it will be. It won't be the same document in front of you, it will be, but it'll be updated.
You make me a paper copy.
I will make you a paper copy, yeah. I will remove everything that we've already done.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're going to take it out together?
I'll just cut it out and put it on its own table or something.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, well, it seems like we are adjourned, so.
Since the meeting's over.